Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to Township of West Orange Planning Board Meeting, September 4th, 2024. Notice that this meeting was given to the Township Clerk and posted on Township Bulletin Board and Township Website Calendar and sent to the West Orange Chronicle and the Star Ledger. This meeting has been properly noticed to the public in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. No new matters will start after 10:30 PM. I ask everybody to rise for a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. The next Planning Board Special Meeting will be held September 11th, 2024 at 6:30 PM in person in Council Chambers. The next regular meeting of the West Orange Planning will be held October 9th, 2024 at 7:30 PM via Zoom. Roll call, please. Jemalek?
Mr. Alpert?
Here.
Mr. Cardozo?
Present.
Ms. Caffler?
Here.
Mr. Morgan?
Here.
Council President Rutherford?
Here.
Mayor McCartney?
Present.
Mr. Guarino?
Present.
Chairman Bogoff?
Here.
And just for the record, Mr. Klein, Mr. Smeraldo, and Mr. Walts won't be joining us tonight.
Thank you. The first order of business tonight is the minutes and resolutions. The minutes from the 7:10 2024 West Orange Planning Board Regular Meeting. Does anybody have any questions, additions, or deletions? Seeing none, I make a motion we adopt this 7:10 2024 West Orange Planning Board Minutes. Do I have a second?
So moved.
Mr. Cardozo's seconds. Yeah, I'm gonna let on the motion.
Mr. Alpert?
Yes.
Ms. Fieldoza?
Yes.
Ms. Caffler?
Yes.
And also President Rutherford?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino? Guarino?
Oh, yes.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Diana, would you swear in our Township Professionals, please?
Yes, we have Mr. Jordan as our Township Engineer tonight, Mr. Hazel as our Planner. You swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
I do.
Thank you.
Application PB 24-02 Wonder Group Incorporated Block 152.01, 1445.01 Zone B2, 481 Eagle Rock Avenue. The applicant's attorney, Mr. James Fant of the Firm of Harrison, Pundla, McKean, and Voleto, has asked that the application be carried to the October 9th, 2024 meeting unless anybody in the Planning Board has any objections. So moved. Done. Okay, PB 24-06 Main Street Holdings LLC, Lot 114, Lot 262, 644, and 308, 410 Main Street. The applicant is proposing a three-story mixed-use development with 12 residential dwelling units above, ground floor parking, and commercial space for the applicant, Mr. Wine.
Yes, good evening, Chairman, members of the board, Benjamin Wine of Prime Tuvella Mecelli on behalf of the applicant, 410 Main Street Holdings LLC. First off, good to see everybody this evening, and can you hear me all right? Okay, so with that, you know, we can jump right into it. Obviously, we've been here at a couple of meetings before, most recently at the August 7th meeting for the proposed 12-unit mixed-use building consisting of 12 residential units over ground floor, commercial, and parking. We had a very, in my opinion, fruitful meeting on August 7th and heard some very good feedback about our building and our site. And we have taken this month to revise our plans to address the comments that we received from the board, the board professionals, and the public. And I look forward to our architect presenting those changes to you this evening in detail. We believe that this puts our project into a better position, and we, like I said, appreciate the feedback immensely. That's why this process exists, and I hope that what you'll see this evening addresses those concerns and comments. After our architect presents those changes, we're going to present our traffic engineering testimony, which will highlight the parking, circulation, and traffic relative to our proposed project. Our engineer Harold Malz, our traffic engineer, has been duly listening to the entire presentation thus far and has also incorporated into his testimony responses to the questions that have arisen to date. As I mentioned, I did have a conversation actually with Ms. McGovern yesterday, just letting her know that we're not intending to complete our case in chief this evening as our planner is not available to provide any testimony, and she will be brought back at the next meeting. But I do believe that we've made excellent progress with the building and with the site design. And so what I'd like to do, Chairman, if it's okay with you, is present our architect to talk about the changes and then have our traffic engineer present his testimony in full this evening.
Perfect. Go right ahead, sir.
Perfect. So with that, I'm going to call on Yogesh Mistry.
Mr. Mistry, would you please raise your right hand? You're gonna have to take yourself off mute. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
All right, so Yogesh, since you have not been the architect presenting previously, it was your colleague, Ms. Clem. If you could give the board the benefit of your educational and professional background and the status of your license as an architect in the state of New Jersey?
Sure. I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey. I have been since 2000. I have a bachelor's degree in architecture from New Jersey Institute of Technology. I currently run a practice in Bud Lake, New Jersey for the past 20 years or so where we design buildings of this type, office buildings, hotels, retail, multifamily. And I've been a professional architect in front of many boards throughout Northern New Jersey.
Okay, and your license is in good standing?
Yes, it is.
And Yogesh, just to confirm for the record, I know Brittany Clem has been presenting and kind of taking the lead on this, but the architectural firm, you are the mystery of mystery design, is that correct?
Yes, I'm the owner of the practice.
Okay, perfect. So Chair, I would submit Mr. Mistry as an expert in the field of architecture.
Do any members of the board have any question for Mr. Mistry or his credentials? Seeing none, Mr. Mistry, we accept you as a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey. Go right ahead, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. So Yogesh, if you could go ahead and share your plans and walk the board through, I know Ms. Clem did a very thorough job in past hearings. So if you could walk the board through the revisions that have been made between the last set of plans that were presented and the plans that they were sent 10 days ago, and what's on the screen this evening?
And just for the record, the date of these new plans? So these revised date?
I'm referring to plans that are dated 8/21/2024. These are the last. And they consist of two sheets, a 2.01 and a 4.01. Essentially, the same plans that were part of the original application, just amended with the revisions I'll describe today.
So Yogesh, go right ahead.
Okay, so there's actually six revisions. There were five listed in the scope of changes, but I'll just go one by one. So the first revision, again, it was based on a discussion at the last hearing, the request for additional, or not additional, but new green roof areas on the roof itself. So we've added two areas of 800 square feet each for a total of 1,600 square feet. These would be green roof trays. We call them, they're essentially like these plastic trays that get filled with vegetation, and they would help in absorbing rainwater and sort of deterring or slowing down the rate of runoff from the roof itself. In addition, it will help to cool the roof and, you know, just provide a relief from the rest of the roofing system here. So that was the first change. The second one was to reconfigure the trash and lobby area. Essentially, this flipped. Before, we had the trash on the right side and the lobby elevator and stair on the left side. They were reversed. The commercial space stayed the same. In doing that, the doors flipped and then in and also flipping the elevator stair and entry lobby, the upper core on the upper levels shifted, so these units had to had to change. So the two-bedroom ended up in this corner. These two units on the left of the elevator and stair became just one-bedrooms. We actually lost a one-bedroom with den just because of how this got reconfigured. So now, instead of having sort of two one-bedrooms, two one-bedroom and den and eight two-bedrooms, this, the one-bedroom plus den became zero, and this became four. So the total is still 12 units. We just, the one-bedrooms, one-bedroom plus den became a one-bedroom. So that was a change for that. And in the elevation itself, I'm gonna, I'm gonna refer to a revised rendering. Not sure if this needs to be marked, but this is an updated rendering of the front and right side elevation of the building.
Yeah, Yogesh, this was on the, this was on the plans that were submitted, so I think we're okay.
Yeah. Okay. So the change was the, this area right here, the doors flipped, you know, this glass entryway would be the entry for the lobby and elevator, and then the door for the trash is on the end now. That got cleaned up a little bit. The third change, the third change I already discussed is really the reconfiguration of the units above due to the lobby and trash room reconfiguration. The fourth change was the handicap toilet room added to the commercial space. I mean, we're showing it within this 900 square foot commercial space, and it wasn't depicted before, but it would have to, any tenant that comes in here would need at least one toilet room for their space. We're showing that now. The fifth item, exterior light fixtures added along rear walk. There was a request for additional illumination along this rear walk. So if I go to the rear elevation, there are one, two, three, four more wall sconces added to that rear elevation. This one was already there over the doorway. The lighting plan by the site engineer has been updated. I did review it. And, you know, as far as I understand, there's no spillover. These are just low-intensity lights that kind of point downward, so you know, we feel that these are appropriate for just illuminating that walkway. And honestly, I think most people who do exit the building would probably either drive their car out of the driveway or walk out of the driveway, or they would walk out of the main door on Main Street. So this, I think the back entrance or exit would really be only used for emergencies. That's how we saw that. And then the last item was the addition of, I know there was discussion regarding the sort of warning light at the exit of the parking garage. So right on, to the right of the overhead doors, there's going to be car coming and going, slow warning light, a small, a small element that gets mounted on the wall, and then an individual post itself. And let me just kind of show you what that would look like in a little more graphic detail in a second. Just had it open. Apologize. So this would be a post that gets mounted in the ground. Essentially, they have a little light in it, and then a warning label for, or go slow and car coming. And then what gets mounted on the wall is this small element. This would have a small speaker. I think there was discussed that it's adjustable in volume as well as being able to, you know, control it during certain hours, you know, eliminating it certain hours, so.
And Yogesh, I'll just, I'll just jump in real quick and just confirm, since these were not submitted, Ms. McGovern, we might want to mark this spec sheet as the next exhibit.
Yeah, I'm looking for where we were. Hold on. Did we mark anything else that wasn't submitted?
We might not have.
I don't think we marked anything. I don't think we've marked anything yet.
Yeah, no, so I think we're A1 on this. And you'll submit that to Jemalek so she can put it with the rest of the documents, okay?
Absolutely.
Yeah, and this item is specifically used for, you know, exactly this type of application. So I think it would be appropriate in our application here. Yeah, so I think those are the really six things, not five, but six things that changed from the previous submission.
So Yogesh, just a couple of follow-up questions. So while we were on the light, it's your understanding from reviewing that spec sheet that it does have an audio component that could be turned off or reduced, you know, at the owner's option, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, and you would have no issue working with the board professionals to come up with, you know, the appropriate times or anything of that nature to either cut the sound entirely or reduce the sound, given, again, the residential neighborhood behind us?
Yeah, sure. It could be tested in the field and, you know, be adjusted accordingly to, you know, whatever preference is needed.
Okay, I want to just go back up to the green roof exhibit. This was, I believe, the question might have come from the Vice Chair, Mr. Guarino. I could be wrong, though, so I apologize if it was a different board member. But there was some, some talk at the last meeting about adding this green roof feature, which I'm glad you've done it, but the concern was that it would then create a bulkhead on top of the roof that would add to, you know, the aesthetic and the height of the building. In order to do this, do we need to add any type of bulkhead to the roof?
No, just servicing of these would just be through the roof hatch, so the stair and elevators don't need to come all the way through and, you know, onto the roof. These really require minimal maintenance. It's not like something you have to water all the time. These are sort of, I guess, self-reliant vegetation that, you know, will just grow in those trays.
Okay.
And they're pretty low. The trays themselves are maybe a foot above the roof line, I mean, the roof surface, so they're pretty shallow. They sit on pedestal, the trays.
Okay, but yeah, the question was that, that we don't need to add a bulkhead to access, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And then my last question to you, you went over the ground floor change to flip the, to flip the trash room with the residential entrance, which I think was the board planner, Mr. Hazel's, request. And in so doing, I believe you were able to add a 14th parking space, is that correct?
Oh, yeah, I apologize. In making this change, it allowed us to kind of sort of narrow up the trash room, and then we were able to add one more parking space to the parking area.
Okay, perfect. All right, so Chair, that concludes my examination of Mr. Mistry.
Okay, thank you, sir. So I have a question. Can you, Mr. Mistry, can you provide the board with the, is this something that you fabricate, or this is a prefabricated roof garden?
No, no, these are sort of things that you just, you know, different vendors sell these tray systems as well as the ceilings that go in inside of them, so.
Great. Can you, can you provide the board eventually with the dimensions and the the company that you're using for this?
Yes, we could definitely do that.
Excellent, okay. We'll go through the board. Vice Chairman Guarino, do you have any questions for Mr. Mistry?
No, I want to thank him for adding that new, my question was on the parking garage warning light. That was my question, and I, I'm glad what he brought out that unit because it shows on all three sides, front and both sides, and it's very visible. So I'm really glad about that, and of course, you'll discuss with the professionals about adjusting the alarm noise during different hours to not affect the residents. So, no, I'm really, I'm quite happy with that portion, and I'll wait for Mr. Walts's presentation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mayor McCartney, do you have any questions for Mr. Mistry?
Thank you, Chairman. I too appreciate the stormwater management element added to this building. And with the shift in the stairwell, you mentioned that a one-bedroom with a den now becomes a one-bedroom. And I don't know if you can answer this, or we wait for Mr. Malz. Will that affect your variance for the parking for these 12 units? Because I thought you just said you added another parking space?
Yes, we picked up this one parking space because of the way this element got reconfigured. So we have, this is actually a typographical, or there should be 14 parking spaces now, now 13. But my understanding, it doesn't impact because the way it's calculated, the parking count, whether it's a one-bedroom and den or a one-bedroom, the ratio is still the same. But in reality, you know, I think the intensity probably goes down just because, you know, just the nature of not having a den there.
And Mr. Wine mentioned that the car alert sign has an audio option. Is it activated with the sensor?
The audio?
No, the, the light itself.
Yes, I believe there's some, you know, some kind of mechanism or sensor that, you know, detects when cars are going in and out of that area.
So it's not that it's on all the time? It would be activated when a car goes by?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, Ms. McCartney, Mayor McCartney, I believe it's actually even, even better than that. I think it's tied into the garage door operation. So if that garage door is triggered by a fob to go up, that's when it would alert pedestrians that there's a vehicle.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Council President Rutherford?
Thank you, Chairman. No questions.
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Alpert?
Yes, thank you for the green roof. I think that was my ask. Um, does that change the calculation for the lot or the building coverage, or is it more that it just mitigates?
Yeah, I don't believe it changes anything. We haven't adjusted those numbers. It just helps to mitigate the runoff.
Okay, and do they, do they drain at some point? Is there some sort of drainage system built in? I'm envisioning, you know, if planting fails and it's not really maintained, that some of those could fill with water and maybe become a mosquito problem at some point?
No, no, there's actually like small holes at the bottom of these trays, so the water will eventually filter down onto the roof surface itself, and then the roof has drained, so.
Great. Okay, um, I think that's all I've got. Thank you.
Great. So just to that point, we will, Ms. McGovern will add that that roof garden has to be maintained in perpetuity. So it doesn't have, so there is no possibility of mosquitoes or any other creatures or promoting roof leaks. Okay, Mr. Morgan?
Yes, thank you, sir. That was my area of concern, maintenance of the green space. That's been addressed, so no questions at this time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Cardozo?
No questions at this time, Chairman.
Ms. Caffler?
No questions for me either. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hazel?
No questions for me at this time. Thanks.
Mr. Hazel, there is a letter from, I'm sorry, Mr. Jordan, wrong person, Mr. Jordan?
Yes. I have no questions at this time. Thank you.
Okay, there's a letter. Let me get this right. August 28th, 2024 for Mr. Hess that has a number of concerns. Mr. Wine, did you see this letter?
Yes, we did, and I apologize, Chairman. I neglected to mention at the beginning that most of those items appeared to be relatively technical in nature that we could just stipulate to comply with as a condition of any approval, including certain calculations, certain dimensions to be added. But I do believe that Mr. Mistry addressed some of those comments in testimony, and you'll hear from our traffic engineer addressing the remainder.
Okay, so at the end of all the testimony, you'll tell us which ones, if any, you won't, that you disagree with or have to have additional testimony. Is that okay?
That's correct, and at this point, I believe we can comply with all the comments.
Outstanding. I like this stuff. Mr. Jordan, I think I did you already. Okay, you got a, you got a twofer.
Council President has his hand raised.
Council President Rutherford, yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to ask, was the addition of the green roof, was that included in the new stormwater management report that we received? Was that, was that calculated? Was that considered in that report?
I don't, I don't believe, you know, even though it helps, he hasn't taken that, that credit for the green roof.
Okay, and it also decreases the heat island effect, just to put that on the record.
Yes.
Okay, do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Mistry on his testimony? Do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Mistry on his testimony? Please raise your hand if identified.
Yes, we have a couple of members.
Great. So for the public, first of all, I want to welcome you on behalf of the Planning Board. Secondly, all questions start with if, when, why, what, how, which, and your testimony was, and I have a question about that. So we would like that to be concise and always ask questions of his testimony. Thank you. Go right ahead.
Okay. MK, please state your name and address for the record.
MK Adams, Park Drive South. Good evening, everyone. Good evening to all my neighbors on Zoom. I do have a question about the, the active alarm. Mr. Guarino had asked for a blade sign. I looked at the dimensions that you shared. How far out of the building does that proposed alarm scout?
There's two, there's two elements. This is like attached to the wall. It only comes out like seven inches, I believe. And the other element is like a baller. It's also seven inches wide, but it's gonna be, you know, sort of off the building a little bit. It's like a, like a post, 48 inches by seven inches.
So this alarm is designed just for, to warn pedestrians, is that correct? Last month, it was noted that the alarm was not intended to warn automobiles drivers turning off of Main Street onto Park Drive North, is that correct?
Yeah, it's just for pedestrians that, you know, may be crossing the sidewalk in the area of the overhead door. That's, that's what it would be for.
And you said that the sensor is probably activated by the garage door or when a fob is pressed. How long does that audio component of the alarm continue after it's activated?
Yeah, I don't think it's a long time. I would have to check the details of the specification, but, you know, just understanding these types of I'm just reading here, 10 seconds or adjustable if a second vehicle activates, it resets the second, 10 seconds it's saying here, so. That's what it's saying.
So it's really not meant for motorists? It's just meant for pedestrians?
Correct.
Um, I don't know whether this question should be for you or for the site engineer, but did you conduct, do you know if anybody conducted a light study? The impact of the building on sunlight to adjacent properties?
Yeah, I'm not sure if the engineer had done that. He has a lighting study that looks at the impact of the light, any, you know, artificial light that's attached to the building or outside the building and its impact on the site.
But there, there hasn't, to your knowledge, been any study for sunlight or how this building would impact sunlight for adjacent properties?
I don't believe so.
Do you know if there's been an air circulation study?
I, I've never heard of, of
Airflow? No?
Airflow study? I've never had to do one for any of my projects. I've never heard of that.
The reason I was asking is because in the renderings, I noticed that the renting was a little adjusted today, but there were a series of plantings on the south side of the building between the townhouses and 410. And my question was, knowing how the sunlight travels in this neighborhood, how anyone would expect plants to survive or grow in that five-foot strip with limited sunlight? Do you know?
We haven't done a study to evaluate that, but are you referring to the strip between here on the?
I'm sorry, the time clock is on the screen.
Yeah, Yogesh, you're not, you're not sharing your screen.
Oh.
You want me to drop the?
Yes, yes, please drop the time clock. Thank you. Thank you.
What are you referring?
There, that's the townhouse. That's actually a new detail on the renderings. But in the the site plans, you can see that the setback is only five feet from that. Um, property line. But there had been a series of plantings shown in that rendering. I'm just curious without a uh sunlight study of. How anyone would expect something to grow in that narrow width of land. I didn't, that's why I was asking if you had conducted a study.
No, we have not.
All right, because certainly I would expect the height of the building to impact the sunlight. Um, that the adjacent properties get now. Yes, would you agree?
I I what was your question, though?
My question is. About uh any sort of study to measure the impact of sunlight and how this building would block sunlight to the adjacent properties.
Yeah, no, we haven't done a study, but you know, I I I think as far as the height of the building, it's not a really tall building in terms of. Uh, you know, what's allowed in this zone. Um. You know, it it the the topography of the site makes it appear taller than it is, but the front of the building is the tallest, and when you get to the back, it's really. You know, not much taller than a regular residential home, so I don't see a large impact. Um, you know, when when you look at the backside, it's really only two stories, maybe two and a half outer grade there. You know, the front side is facing. Main Street and, you know, there's really no one to to create shadows on on Main Street.
I'm sorry, what did you just say? No one on what? Does one on Main?
There's no other buildings on Main Street to create shadows.
Oh, I see. The the shadows would be cast on the the buildings just south of your proposed building and behind it for sure. That's why I was asking. That's all I have for now. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Do any other members of the public have any questions? Please raise your hand and be identified.
I'm not seeing any.
Do any other members of the public have any questions for Mr. Mystery on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
I'm not seeing any.
Seeing none. Thank you. Mr. Wine, you have the floor.
Perfect. Thank you, Yogesh. Stick around, but if you can drop your screen. Okay, so Chair, with that, uh, my next and the final witness I intend to call this evening is Harold Malz, our traffic engineer.
Mr. Malz, I need you to raise your right hand.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, okay. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Harold, can you, uh, since it's your first time testifying um on this application, can you please give the board the benefit of. Your educational and professional background and the status of your license uh and acceptance as a traffic engineer in the state?
Yes, I'm a licensed professional engineer by test in the state of New Jersey. I've been licensed for fifty years. I'm a principal of the firm of Hamel Associates located in West Orange, New Jersey. Coincidentally. Uh, I also reside in West Orange, and my wife and I have resided here for the past forty seven years. Um, I've uh hold a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from the Newark College of Engineering. Hold a Master of Science in Civil Engineering with a major in transportation from the Newark College of Engineering. Hold a Master of Science in Environmental Engineering from the New Jersey Institute of Technology. Uh, I have fifty five years experience as a transportation engineer specializing in both traffic and highway engineering. And in that capacity, I've also served as an adjunct on the faculty of the New Jersey Institute of Technology. For whom I periodically in the past taught a course in highway engineering to employees. Of the New Jersey Department of Transportation at their main facility facility in Ewing, New Jersey. I've appeared more than a thousand times in front of municipal boards. Uh, most types of applications to bill land uses, uh, and also. More than forty times on applications on behalf of or uh for applications before the West Orange boards.
Harold, only a thousand, only a thousand boards?
No, no, more than a thousand times appearing. In fact, most of my work now is uh appearing on behalf of municipal boards.
I I was just kidding with you, and just to confirm your light, the status of your license is in good standing.
Yes, it is.
All right, so Chairman, I would submit Mr. Malz as an expert in the field of traffic engineering.
Thank you. Do any members of the board have any questions about Mr. Malz's credentials? Seeing none. We accept Mr. Malz as a an expert in traffic engineering, and at a thousand testimonies, I think they name a roadway after you somewhere.
I'm hoping, I'm hoping before I retire. It's actually well over a thousand after fifty five years.
Okay, thank you, sir. You have the floor.
Thank you. So Harold, um, I know you obviously submitted a report uh that went along with our application to support our application. Um, and most, perhaps even more importantly, you've also heard all of the testimony and the questions. Uh, thus far over the several hearings with respect to this application. So with that, I would just ask you if you could please. Uh, walk the board through your testimony related to circulation, traffic, and parking.
Yes, my report was dated January twelfth, two thousand twenty four, which is submitted to the board. Uh, the application has uh been described, noted that twelve apartment units have been revised to four one-bedroom and no dens. Made two-bedroom. I would just note to Mayor McCartney that the reduction of the den from the uh. Uh, number does not affect the parking calculations or trip generation at all. All the numbers stay the same. Um, now there are fourteen spaces in the garage, uh, and uh. Uh, just briefly, my firm was retained to do a trip generation analysis and a site parking analysis of this project. And attempt to answer any other questions that related that might come up. Proceeding into my direct testimony, in terms of existing conditions. Park Drive North is a municipal roadway. It's one-way, extends one-way west from a Main Street T-intersection. Uh, proceeds about the six hundred feet west where it turns south for about a hundred and seventy feet. And then turns east on Park Drive South to terminate again at a stop control T-intersection with Main Street. It's one-way on a counterclockwise flow. There's no parking on the left side or the inside of that uh roadway loop. Uh, and there is parking on the outside. Uh, of that section. Um, the roadway is twenty-four feet wide and twenty posted twenty-five miles per hour speed limit. And it's really a residential area along both sides of the roadway. Main Street uh is a county route, uh, six fifty-nine. It follows a generally north-south alignment. Within our area, it's forty-six feet wide. It's twenty-five mile an hour speed limit. And it's striped as two lanes each way, but operates as one lane each way due to parking permitting in various segments of the roadway length. As well as due to the presence of uh bus stops. Um, there is a permitted parking on the roadway in our area, which is two-hour parking, eight AM to eight PM, Monday to Saturday. There is no parking overnight in anywhere on street from two AM to five AM in West Orange. I would note also that there is a bus stop on the Main Street frontage of our site, as well as directly across the street. And about six hundred feet further to the north is the Mississippi uh bus loop station. Um, that describes the existing conditions. In terms of traffic projections for the site, what we're looking at is. Twelve units of apartments and nine hundred square feet of commercial space. The calculation for the uh peak weekday peak hour trip generation for the project. Is broken up into the multifamily uh housing, low-rise, and because the commercial nine hundred square feet. Uh, is not known as the weather, it's gonna be retail or office. Table one of my report, which is traffic projections, did a calculation for each of those uh. Types of commercial uses separately and totaled them. And I would note, uh, we use the in calculating the trip generation, the source that is used by traffic engineers, and it's quite voluminous. Is the Institute of Transportation Engineers, the I T E. Trip Generation Eleventh Edition Publication. That's the newest edition. And I would note, the New Jersey Residential Site Improvement Standards specifically require you. For any residential project to use that document in calculating trip generation for any residential project. Okay, the as shown in table one, the twelve units of residential apartments will produce five AMP. The AM peak hour trips. That's one in and four out. In the PM peak hour, it would be six, four in and two out. Uh, I've broken the retail and office down. Uh, they're identical in the uh morning, uh, but the retail is uh larger in the evening. Uh, so I'm just gonna go with the higher value. The retail has two trips uh in the morning and six trips in the evenings, evening. Split evenly uh in and out. The total site generation for this project. Um, two area roads is seven trips in the morning for the apartment plus retail. Uh, which is two in and five out and twelve in the evening, which is seven in and five out. On an average basis, this is about five, one-vehicle trip in the area. Uh, a Main Street or uh or Park Drive North. Uh. Uh, in the peak hour, about one vehicle every five to nine minutes in the peak hour. What is of importance to note, and I I would just say, these are, uh, this is a negligible magnitude of projected peak hour traffic. And the total trip generation is too small to have any perceptible impact, traffic impact at any location. It's just too small. In relation to the residential apartments. They're gonna have their parking uh in the garage. There's only one uh. Space allocated for the retail use. It's anticipated the act traffic activity related to the retail use, whether it's retail or office. Would have uh its activity along Main Street. However, the uh residential use would utilize uh. Uh, Park Drive North. And what would be of concern is how much traffic are we gonna generate? Along those the counterclockwise loop along Park Drive North and going around the loop to exit then Park Drive South. Well, table one shows what the outbound is in each case. In the morning, there would be four outbound vehicles in the hour. That comes to about one, on average, one car every fifteen minutes. This is negligible. Uh, in the evening, because there's actually more of a return flow home, there's only two outbound cars in the PM peak hour, which would take that. Counterclockwise loop. That's one car every thirty minutes. These are very nominal negligible flows that would not have any impact on any location. Okay, continuing on to the uh parking analysis of my report. The residential portion of the parking is subject to the Residential Site Improvement Standard. The commercial portion is subject to the municipal ordinance. For the Residential Site Improvement Standards, the twelve-unit apartments would require twenty-three spaces based on the uh standards they identify. The municipal ordinance, whether it's office or retail, requi requires one space for two hundred and fifty square feet. With nine hundred square feet uh proposed, rounding up, that's four spaces. What you have is twenty-three residential, four commercials, twenty-seven. And then because there are two EV spaces being proposed within the garage, they count as two spaces each according to the uh. Uh, state's guidelines. Uh, consequently, there's a two-space credit. Therefore, the maximum required, twenty-seven minus two is twenty-five. There's fourteen spaces proposed. And that means we have a shortfall of eleven spaces. And this does not reflect the uh availability of mass transit use, which I'm gonna get into in a moment. Section five, colon, twenty-one dash four point fourteen C of the RSIS states. Uh, table four point four, which is the table that tells you how many uh spaces you need uh. Uh, for each type of uh uh bedroom count on unit. See, it specifies the maximum number of parking spaces planning boards and other local reviewers shall require. The number of parking spaces is based on the number, size, and type of dwelling. And more specifically, it goes on as number one, reviewers may allow fewer parking spaces when warranted. Factors that may affect parking include the following: one, household characteristics; two, access to mass transit; three, geographic location; and four, off-site parking resources. I would note the proposed site is located in a very close proximity to New Jersey Transit bus stops on each side. Of Main Street, right opposite the site, as well as the Mississippi Bus Loop, uh, further to New York, uh, to the north. Uh, which is in easy walking distance, which also has New York bus access. Consequently, a reduction to what otherwise would be the RSIS maximum residential parking requirements of twenty-three. Uh, would be appropriate. Uh, the New Jersey Transit Publication Planning for Transit Friendly Land Use identifies parking reductions to standards. For residential, commercial, and office uses. For sites within a quarter of a mile. Uh, they are noted as uh just. It it is, just give me one second. It's noted as a transit corridor, which has for both office and residential a five to ten percent reduction. In the uh required parking. If you take, if you go back to the twenty-seven spaces. Uh, before any reductions were taken, uh, take ten percent, it's rounded, it's three. Consequently, the parking requirement, starting at twenty-seven, reduce two E for EV credits, three for mass transit. Reduces to twenty-two spaces. Consequently, the deficit is eight spaces, and you need mitigation for the eight spaces. In discussions with my client, the applicant, the applicant is proposing to lease limit. Uh, the apartments to one space per unit. Consequently, with twelve apartments. Uh, the twelve residential units would have ten spaces, minus the two uh EV credit, minus the three for mass transit. Uh, usage, and then adding in the four commercial requirement equals eleven spaces, and there are fourteen spaces proposed. Con- consequence or pin our opinion, it's adequate to meet the RSIS standards as well as guidelines. Uh, RSIS further allows reviewers to consider household characteristics. In this particular case, it would be the one-to-bedroom apartments, uh, which tend to have lower vehicle ownership. Uh, in addition, for off-site parking, there is off-site parking available. Uh, nearby, Main Street permits uh two-hour parking from uh, I had the, I think it's from. Eight AM. Excuse me, I have it here somewhere. Just give me one second. I think it's from eight AM to eight PM, and parking is permitted uh at all other times, except for overnight parking from two AM to five PM. But more importantly, um, there is a parking lot, the municipal parking lot, known as Lot Number One. That's the Harrison, Mississippi lot, which is located to the north of Ma- on Ma- off Main Street, about six hundred feet to the north. And that lot has seventy-four spaces in it. Just give me one second. Forty-six of those spaces are three-hour metered spaces, twenty-eight of them are twenty-four-hour permit spaces. Uh, on the metered spaces, there's a three-hour limit, Monday to Saturday, eight AM to six PM. Uh, no parking, two AM to five AM, and it's free on Sunday and holidays, and it's only twenty-five cents an hour. The uh twenty-four-hour uh permit spaces, there are twenty-eight available, and a one-year permit. Uh, uh, can be purchased from the township for a hundred and forty dollars for the entire year. Uh, I checked with the uh. Uh, with the. Police Department on the uh the Records Bureau on how many uh permits have been issued. And today, as of today, uh, I got a response back. There are twelve permits currently issued for Lot Number One. Which means there are sixteen permits available. It's my understanding that. The applicant cannot go in and buy permits on behalf of anybody who resides in the building, who happens to have the second car. What's required is, the township requires the resident to come in with their driver's license and proof of residency. To apply for the permit, but the applicant has indicated to Mr. Wine and myself that they will reimburse the uh. Uh, individual for the cost of the second, parking the second car. Uh, Mr. Wine can confirm. Mr. Wine can confirm that if necessary. Under any event. There is adequate parking nearby, or both in the permit lot for a second vehicle. As well as on street, particularly on Main Street. I think that. Finishes the testimony from my report itself, but I do have a few other things that I'd like to. Present based on what was asked about previously. Okay. There was a discussion, a concern about a. Vehicle making the right turn, it was brought up in Mr. Hess's report. Making a right turn into the garage, into the first space on the right that he thought it was somewhat difficult to do. The site engineer provided, requested turning templates, vehicle turning templates. I did not prepare them, so I'm not going to address them directly, but it was pointed out. I would also recommend that corner space, a couple of things. A vehicle can back up into it, and I would recommend that that space be restricted to a compact space. Now by that, I don't mean a compact space like a Mini Cooper or some, or a Smart Car. I'm talking something like a Honda Civic or Accord, which is smaller certainly than. Minivan or SUV or anything like that, which the shorter and narrower vehicle allows. More maneuverability for backing in and then leaving. So that's what I would recommend for that particular space, and I believe it would function well. Secondly, the two-way parking aisle, the ninety-degree, the RSIS requires twenty-four foot wide. What's available here and is marked on the plans, it's twenty-three feet wide. Twenty-two feet wide at the garage door opening, twenty-three feet wide. In the parking aisle itself, and that's where the maneuverability occurs for vehicles when they're parking or unparking. I believe that it is adequate at twenty-three feet. And it does require, the minimalist exception be granted by the board to the RSIS. Just trying to step through. There was a comment by Mr. Hess in his review letter. I don't have his August one, the last one I had was July thirtieth. But I'm going to address this, it was point number fifteen. Which indicates a vehicle exiting the garage will extend across the sidewalk. Before the driver will be able to see any pedestrians walking on the sidewalk. And he said, therefore, the plans must be revised, they had a pedestrian warning device. To notify pedestrians when a vehicle is exiting the garage. While the architect has presented that tonight with the visual, you know, sign, the lit sign and the audio. But geometrically, what I'd like to point out is the. appropriate, the, as stated in the roadway design standards, the setback for site distance. To the driver's eye is fourteen and a half feet back from the curb point. Into the drive for the exiting driver. This would be approximately right underneath, you went fourteen and a half feet back from the curb. It's about right underneath the garage door. At this location for a nineteen-foot-long design vehicle, which is what's in the ASH O book. Which vehicles aren't that long anymore, very candid. I have a minivan, a Chrysler Pacific minivan, an SUV, and they're only seventeen feet long. And I checked some others, like an Odyssey, and they're only seventeen feet long or within an inch or so. So it's being very conservative. Typically, the driver's eye position is about seven feet back from the front of a car. Based on measurements from the ASH O Design Vehicle Exhibit. In that publication, for a nineteen-foot-long car, it's about eight feet back. So knowing that your, the driver's position is fourteen and a half feet back from the curb. And you go eight feet off of that to where the front of the car would be, that would be six and a half feet from the curb. If you look at the plan, across the garage driveway, the sidewalk is five feet, within the five feet up against the curb. Consequently, the front of the car is not across the sidewalk, it's actually one and a half feet before the sidewalk. And for a shorter vehicle, it would be even more, if it was a seven-foot distance, it would be two and a half feet. So, you know, I disagree with the comment, we have the warning device proposed anyway, but I'd just like to point out to the board. The car does not encroach into the sidewalk when it first can come out and see to the left and the right. Also, in terms of site distance, at that fourteen and a half foot location. A driver can see all the way up the sidewalk, across the entire frontage to the left. And looking to the right, the driver can see almost to the curb return across the sidewalk, looking to the right towards Main Street. And. I think I'm just about the, I think that, I think I've covered everything. That I, oh, there is one other thing. One thing in field inspecting the site, taking photos, one thing that I was surprised about in the field. Was that the bus stop fronting the site on Main Street in the southbound direction. I noted was where the bus stop is, and then it has, it notes no parking to the right, which goes all the way up to Park Drive North. It was a very long distance. And I checked the municipal ordinance, and the municipal ordinance says that the. Bus stop location is a hundred and five feet, extends a hundred and five feet. From Park Drive North southerly curb line, along the westerly curb line of Main Street. I field measured the actual location of the posted bus stop. And it's a hundred and thirty-seven feet, not a hundred and five. Consequently, the significance of this is that there's a thirty-two foot difference. Which if the bus stop was properly posted, that thirty-two feet would provide extra. Parking along the side frontage, and if there was a delivery truck. Or any other sort of truck that had to come and get parking along Main Street related to the site. Thirty-two feet places that truck closer to the doors on Main Street, the refuse stores. As well as the access doors to the pedestrian, excuse me, the apartments. So I just note that, whether anybody wants to do anything about it, you know, I defer to the board and my client. But I think that takes care of everything I wanted to present tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, so I have a couple of questions.
Oh, sorry, Chairman, I was just going to ask a couple of follow-ups if that's all right.
Go right ahead, Mr. Wine.
Sure, thank you. So first, we'll start with that last bit of testimony, I know it's not often that. An applicant's engineer tells a town what they should or shouldn't do. But it, if they were to reduce that hundred and thirty-seven foot bus stop area to the hundred and five that's in the municipal ordinance. That would, I just want to be clear, that space, there's no reason, there's no no parking signs or anything that you believe would. Prevent that from just becoming either a parking space or a loading space, correct?
Yes, and in fact, the thirty-two foot distance is suitable for an SU thirty truck, a thirty-foot-long truck. I would also like to note, I met with the county traffic engineer, Asaf Mahmood. And brought him a copy of the West Orange Municipal Ordinance to show it to him. And I asked him if the county has any different ordinance than what the town has. And he said, no, they adopt the township's ordinance administratively, so the hundred and five is what applies.
Okay, so Mr. Jordan.
Different county ordinance.
So, Mr. Jordan, take note, but the next, the next question I want to, I want to turn to. You indicated in your testimony regarding the availability of the number of parking spaces being proposed at fourteen. Where twenty-five is required. So based on, you know, the testimony with respect to the least limitation of one space per unit, which is, which is twelve. Spaces out of the fourteen, as well as all the reductions you spoke to. You, you came to the conclusion that the onsite parking is sufficient for the development. That said, it is your understanding that nevertheless, if there was any overflow or a second vehicle. In consultation with, with the police department noting that there are available parking spaces for purchase. As well as our client that they are committed to reimbursing tenants. You certainly feel, I just want to confirm that there is more than sufficient parking for this project onsite and then overflow offsite.
Yes, there is, and that conforms with RSIS guidelines.
Okay, perfect. And lastly, and Chairman, this is, this is more me suggesting this for the record, because Mr. Maltz alluded to it. He is correct, we did discuss with our clients, they actually approached the police department and offered, I believe, to pay. For ten spaces for ten years upfront, but they were told they simply can't do that. Until the, the, the units are created and the residents come ask. But I do want to indicate for the record that my client is committed to providing for no additional charge to the residents. The availability of a second parking space if it is so needed.
And I just, I have to say one thing for the record, Council President, Council President Rutherford had to leave due to a work-related emergency, I got a. A message on that, so Jemalat will just mark, mark it at this point. For him to listen to for the conclusion later on, but I'm sorry to interrupt.
Go right ahead.
If I could just, on that permit parking, just one thing to close out. I was advised by the. Documents clerk that when you get a space, a permit for a space in lot one. You can't go and use it in lot two. That space is used for lot one. In this case, it actually is, there's another permit lot, lot two down at Washington Street. But if they get permits for lot one, they can only be used in lot one.
Thank you, Chairman, so that, that really concludes my direct examination of Mr. Maltz.
Okay, Mr. Maltz, and first thing is, the bus stop that is on Main Street, is that a, an end of the street, a bus stop or a mid-street bus stop?
It's, it's at the end, it starts at Park Drive. North, the south curb line, and then it extends a hundred, well, right now it measures a hundred and thirty-seven feet. To where the sign is actually posted. It's not mid-block, it's actually the north end of that curb line. It's all along most of our frontage.
Interesting, because when Mr. Hazel and I made a site visit, the bus stopped midway at the four-ten property. So it was, it was a mid-block, mid-block bus stop. Which apparently is slightly different than an end of the street bus stop, but I'll let the zoning official. Work that out, and they can decide where the bus stop actually is, because when we were there.
The sign is located mid-block more or less. But the bus stop area extends on the near end of that block.
Right, but if the sign is mid-block, isn't a hundred and fifty feet for the bus stop, not a hundred and five feet? If it's mid-block as opposed to the end of the block?
No.
No?
The exact wording is along Main Street, southbound on the westerly side thereof. At Park Drive North, far side, beginning at the southerly curb line of Park Drive North. And extending one hundred five feet southerly thereof.
Right, okay, we'll actually have to see where the bus physically stops, because when we were there, the bus stopped somewhere else. So either the bus is going to move or the sign is going to move, but we'll let the zoning official do that. The second thing is, the RSIS and the guidelines, so does the board have to follow the guidelines using this? As a commuter area, where there are buses and other means of transportation, that's a guideline for the board. If it so chooses to modify the, and give a variance for the parking spots.
Yes, you're right, it's, it's a guideline. That they specify different criteria that can be considered in arriving at a different numbers.
So the RSIS would require twenty-three spaces, you get four spaces for credits, so it's twenty-one spaces. Of which there's fourteen available, of which one of them is a handicapped space, is that correct?
Yes, there's one handicap combined with an EV, and then one space EV by itself.
Okay, so the one space EV with handicapped will has to be used by a handicapped stick or car, is that correct?
Yes, although I think if there's no handicapped people in the building, I'm not a hundred percent sure. But I think if there's no handicap, the vehicle in the building, that somebody could possibly use that, because it's residence only. It's not for train.
And, and you've stated you've made a site visit to the area, you've gone up Park Drive North and Park Drive South. When you were there, did you see cars parked along the outer rim all the way around of the Park Drive North and Park Drive South?
On the legal areas?
Yes, on the legal areas.
Yeah, I saw cars parked there, I didn't see anybody parked on the inside.
Okay, so the testimony that this is a commuter area, that people may or may not use the bus, those people are parked there. So some of them have driveways, but the street is full of cars. And the board is now supposed to look at this and say, these people are going to use other transportation. I just want the board to be clear, for those who made a site visit of what we're looking at, there is an option. In the RSIS to use a guideline, if you see that there are spaces available on the street or other areas. So the RSIS is mandated, and these are other things called guidelines. So we have to decide how we use those guidelines, I just want to be clear about that. And there's, the RSIS also requires a twenty-four-foot-wide drive aisle, this is twenty-three feet, why did they pick twenty-four feet? You are the expert.
That's, I think, always been a standard I've seen, you know, and it doesn't mean that twenty-three doesn't work. If somebody had a over-large vehicle, is it overly cautious driver, they might possibly make just one more backup and forward maneuver. But certainly, you can be accommodated in a twenty-three-foot aisle.
Right, what was it?
I think the twenty-four foot comes from, and this is off the top of my head after many years. A typical lane is twelve feet wide. So basically, two ways, it's twelve feet and twelve feet, it's twenty-four.
So again, I, I am not an expert, but I did some research, so what it has to do is a safety factor, you're the expert. Where two cars passing safely, safe distance between them and on the other side. So again, the board's going to look at this and say, does this make sense? Is it going to work? Cars are smaller today, narrower than when these standards were made, so we'll have to judge that. Other than that, thank you, sir, that was an outstanding presentation, I've been on the board a long time, not as long as you've been an expert. But I am quite impressed, thank you so much, sir.
I had hair on my head when I started.
Oh, baby, and I was a lot shorter, I just keep growing, okay. To that end, Council, Vice President, oh, Vice President, Vice Chairman, you may be the Vice President, Vice Chairman Guarino, go for it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Maltz, welcome, it's good to see you again, it's been a while since Alyssa Drive. And I commend you on that, because that was very beneficial to the entire township. So thank you, sir, and I respect your abilities and your observation. I just have a couple of questions, sir, to ask you. Could you tell me the times of day that you visited the site and the surrounding neighborhood and the street? And what types of activities were going on, sir?
Well, I've been out, as I said, I'm a resident of the town, and I travel this way many, many times. The. As the, I've made a number of trips out here to look at things. Generally, I would say late morning or early afternoon, but I did do. Of activity on Main Street in the area. During peak hours on November second of last year, it's a Thursday, good weather day, school day. From eight-ten to eight-forty-five, and then in the same day from five to five-thirty. What I wanted to do is take a look and see what sort of activity was occurring. Along Main Street, especially with the signal up ahead at Harrison. And so I was there for an extended period of time. I drove, I've been out there probably a half a dozen times. Driving the Park Drive North and South. There are times I went by, I wasn't even there specifically for the project, but I would just turn up the street and come back down. Right off the top of my head, I can't tell you exactly what dates they were. But I did have photos that I took. That were dated. One set was Tuesday, August twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. There was another set that was Tuesday, June twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. I took all the photos, some of them were of the bus stop area that I discussed, and I, I indicated on my. Photos where the hundred and five foot was versus where the. Location of the existing sign is, I have one of photos of Park Drive North and South each end. And you're looking up the roadways, and I was along Main Street. In addition, I was there making sketches, you know, of the area, also at the permit parking lot. Lot number one. uh, lot number one. So I've been out here a number of times. It was just, wasn't one stop and goodbye.
During your times there, sir, did you ever see an increased number of schoolchildren, young children traversing the area?
The, uh, I did make a note on my field observations. I saw some children walking, uh, along Main Street. Uh, wasn't noted as a lot, just some occasional, uh, uh, traffic, pedestrian traffic, uh, and that was it. It wasn't, it wasn't a notation, uh, of, uh, numerous, uh, children. I know Washington Street School is, uh, further to the south. In fact, my wife went there. She used to live on Washington Street. Um, so we're familiar with the area. I also did all the traffic studies, uh, for the schools in West Orange years ago, um, as you probably well know. Um, but, uh, I saw, I did have a note that I saw a few, uh, in fact, I'm looking at it, some schoolchildren present. That's all it was. I didn't quantify it, but there wasn't a, a number that would identify something of, uh, particular concern like a crossing guard or anything like that.
Well, and when, if you were going up Park Drive and everything else, did you see a number of children walking up that area during those times?
No, I didn't go up there right at that time.
That would be important to know. Okay, so that would be important to know about schoolchildren walking up the area, you know, for additional cars going up and young children, especially any children from Washington, because Washington basically is a, but those kids walk to that school in that area. So that's just a, you know, question for me. My last question.
I think what you, if I could just interject, um, uh, I'm not poo-pooing what you're saying, but you have to keep in mind what the trip generation is for the site. The residential part of the project is what would generate traffic going around, uh, the counterclockwise, uh, one way. And the outbound in the morning, as I pointed out, in the peak hour when children would be there, is only four trips in an hour outbound. And in the evening, which is a couple of two, two and a half hours after school gets out, it's only two. So this is not something that's, uh, like a shopping center or supermarket. These are very, very nominal flows.
Okay, my la, my last question, sir, is just a hypothetical, and if then, if we were to continue our road diet, you notice how well our road diet is working on everything down Main Street from Washington down to, you know, down, if it was continued up from Washington up to Eagle Rock Avenue, do you think that would have a negative or a positive impact with traffic in this group, for this project? Or just for the.
Well, I don't know what's been proposed there. I haven't seen, uh, uh, any plans. Um, but certainly in terms of the traffic that's generated for this project, it's so nominal. The, as I said, any impacts would be imperceptible. In addition, uh, anybody turning, going north, uh, oriented to the, uh, site would be making a left turn off of, uh, Main Street and would not get up to the Harrison Avenue signalized intersection, all those hundreds of, uh, feet away. In addition, proceeding southbound, uh, draw on, uh, Main, through the Harrison signal, making a right, that I found had a lot of gaps uh, from my field, peak hour observations, and to right turns in were readily made.
Okay, and the one thing, sir, is do you feel that alarm device, uh, on structure on the building to alert people that a car is exiting, do you think it's sufficient, particularly, I'm saying, is for small children?
Yes, I, I think, uh, it would be because it is a lit device. It would light up when someone is there. And, uh, you have the audio. It certainly would draw a child's, uh, attention. In addition, as I pointed out, the garage door is set back some ways, uh, without the car having to cross into the sidewalk area as it moves up, uh, and would see the, any children or any pedestrians on the sidewalk before encroaching into the sidewalk. But certainly that device, uh, is helpful. And in fact, I would tell you, my daughter lived in a, in Hoboken, where they had a similar type of situation, where they would pull up and they actually had mirrors, uh, on the exit, uh, when the, uh, gate went up, uh, and the sidewalk in that case was right up to where the exit from the, uh, uh, garage was, and it was an eleven-story, uh, building, the Maxwell Apartments, uh, along the river, and an alarm would go off. There was no lighting, but an alarm would go off and it would alert people. And that one was not as safe as this one. But the sidewalk on that one went right up to the garage door area.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Maltz. I appreciate your responses. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm done, sir.
Chairman, you're muted, but it looks like you're trying to speak.
Um, no, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Dan McCartney, sorry.
Thanks, Chairman. So hello, Mr. Maltz. I need to. I have notes all over the place. Um, I'm not really sure where to start. I was wondering if there was, we talked about the technical letter from Mr. Hess. Was there anything left in that letter that you needed to address?
I, in the July letter, I don't have the August one. Uh, the July letter, that was the only thing that I had to address. Everything else was by everybody.
Mr. Wine, is there someone else that will address those technical questions? Or anything that's left for the board to hear?
Uh, like I had said, um, I don't know, I'll defer to the board engineer. I don't know that they need testimony so much as just acquiescence to agree with them as conditions of approval. Um, like, for example, some of them talked about showing additional sewer calculations and things like that, which again, we, we, we can certainly do them. Um, our, our engineer is available. He is here, but, uh, but I, I didn't feel unless Mr. Jordan feels otherwise that they needed specific testimony.
Thank you. Um, so a couple of things. One, I, Mr. Maltz, uh, welcome. You were told, not that you would be able to differentiate if the students at Washington Street School or one block south at Edison Middle School, but we did put a beacon right there for students that were coming out of Central Six Edison. Um, instead of darting across the road, there's a beacon light there for them to cross getting to Dunkin' Donut. Um, you know, you're, are you saying that you don't see students walking along Main Street?
No, I didn't say that. I, I have a note from my field observations that I saw some, some schoolchildren present in the morning period, but it didn't strike me as a lot.
And in the afternoons when school gets out?
I, I was there during the rush hour period, which was, uh, let's say four-thirty to five, somewhere around there, which is a couple of hours after school.
Right, mhm. Uh, I appreciate that you said there's, uh, second parking spaces that would be paid for by the applicant over a ten-year period. You made mention also about a possible lease agreement. Is that something else? The applicant, if there is, uh, a rental fee or storage, is the applicant going to provide that for the residents also if there's a rental fee?
By rental, you mean for a parking space?
If you have a lease agreement, you know, hypothetically with the church, uh, or, right?
Yeah, so it's, it's a good point, and I can speak to this. I don't think Mr. Maltz is, uh, is, is even really knowing that. I did speak to, to my client, if you'd like, I'm happy to address that. So my client has had excellent conversations with the church across the street. Um, it would be a mutually beneficial agreement if it, if something can get drawn up, whereby the church, when not in use, would make, would lease spaces out to, uh, this particular development. Uh, my client is committed to doing that. We, I didn't want to stipulate to it only because we don't have anything in writing, um, as of yet, but I, I suffice it to say, it would benefit the church in that I'm sure they could use the extra income. Um, it would benefit us because if it's just an alternate to providing the parking at the, uh, the municipal lot that Mr. Maltz spoke to, it's just another option. So it's certainly on the table. I just didn't want to commit that it is anything in writing as of yet.
Right, I, I know that. Thank you. But you're saying that the applicant would pay for that, or the residents would have to pay?
No, so any, any, any amount of payment, and I, I said it, uh, Mr. Maltz actually said it regarding the municipal lot, would be reimbursed to the, to the residents. So to the extent that a space was needed, whether it was there or at the church, um, it, it would not cost the resident any additional money to have that space.
Great. Um, Mr. Maltz, I was trying really hard to follow your math when we had twenty-seven spaces and then a credit of two for EV and then a credit for public transportation, something, and retail space. We had a shortfall of eleven, but then somehow now we only need eleven and there's fourteen. I'm real, I had a really hard time.
I'm not surprised.
Following that.
Can I go through it again?
I, I just, and the other thing that's clear as mud to me also is, um, it seemed like you can share space with, uh, an EV and a handicap access person, uh, that really doesn't make sense to me.
Well, it's, uh, I think the site engineer could have spoken to that, but I've seen this on many projects where they have combined, in boards I represent also, where they have combined handicap and EV spaces, um, and then separate EV-only spaces. Uh, I think that may even be in the guidelines. Uh, but I can't answer it specifically off the top of my head, but I.
That's saying that if someone with a handicap.
In other boards.
That's saying that someone with a handicap placard then could park in an EV space?
Uh, I believe so in this case.
Just to, just to be clear, Harold, I think, I think we're getting a little, I understand the question. Um, there are two required EV spaces. One of those is required to be available to the handicap space in case that individual with, with ADA, um, needs, you know, also happens to have an electric vehicle, and then the other space would just be in a standard space as well.
But there's only one, so then there are two handicap accessible spaces?
No, there's one handicap space, two EV spaces. One of those EV spaces is the handicap space.
Okay. Okay, so can we go over the math again, please? I'm sorry.
Yes. Um, the way it works, and I, I knew this question was going to come up. It starts out that there's, based on RSIS, there's twenty-three spaces required and four spaces by municipal ordinance for the commercial part, which gives you twenty-seven.
Okay.
Okay, now, uh, you get a two-space credit for the EV spaces,
Right.
which brings it down to twenty-five.
Right.
The mass transit adjustment, as I spelled out, is a three-space reduction, which brings it down to, uh, twenty, uh, twenty-two.
Right.
So consequently, we have an eight-space deficit. So for the mitigation of the eight spaces, um, uh, what we have is we're proposing a lease limit of one space per unit. So what the new calculation would be, twelve residential spaces, that's one space per apartment, minus the two EV, uh, space credit, minus the three mass transit, and then add the four commercial spaces, that then equals eleven, and we have fourteen spaces proposed. And then you have the criteria that the RSIS allows you to consider off, off-track, uh, off-site parking, which in this case is the permit lot, which has more than enough available permit spaces as identified by, uh, Township, uh, uh, Document Center, as well as on-street parking for, uh, uh, visitors. So it allows you to accommodate the, that difference in that way.
So Harold, to, to, to direct, um, Mayor McCartney's question, and I, I think I understand where she's going with it. It's, Mayor, it's not to say we don't need the parking variance. We do need the parking variance. It's, it's, right.
But it's not, you're getting there, mhm.
It's, it's not only how we're getting there, it's the mitigation technique of lease limiting one-to-one that's helping to mitigate the need for the relief, coupled with the, uh, the commitment to provide that off-site parking to anybody who does have a second vehicle.
And so, and that permit, that one permit, one permit per tenant applies to all tenants? Every unit gets one, regardless if it's a two-bedroom or a three-bedroom?
There's no three-bedroom, so it's a, if it's a two-bedroom or a one-bedroom.
And so everyone just gets one permit regardless of the number of units they have, I mean, the number of bedrooms they have?
Mayor, it's only if they need it. If somebody is living in a one-bedroom and they only have one car, they wouldn't need the, uh, permit for parking a second car.
No, Harold, Mayor, the mayor's talking about permits in the building, so, yes.
They, they're going to be assigned. Spaces will be assigned. There's no transient parking in this facility.
No, I understand, I understand.
And Mayor, what I would say as well from, I, I know, um, you know, I know I, I look pretty young, but I've been doing, you know, I've been doing this for a few years. Enough to say that in my experience, what ends up happening with situations like this, if you end up with a unit that doesn't have a car, for example, a one-bedroom apartment, that they simply don't have any vehicles, of course, we're going to make use of the space. We wouldn't leave it vacant. So if somebody else had a second vehicle, rather, if, you know, we, we're providing the option to park it off-site at the municipal lot or the church lot if that becomes an option, but certainly if there's a second available space in the building itself, that would obviously be prioritized.
I understand. Right, that wasn't, my question was that there, the question was actually that there will only be one permit issued per unit, regardless of the size of the unit.
Correct.
Okay, that was the question.
Well done, Mayor.
I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alper.
Sure, um, Mr. Maltz, good to see you. Um, the, uh, the munis, the municipal lot, uh, permit spots, uh, those permits would allow for overnight parking?
Yes, the twenty-four hour.
Okay, and Mr. Wine is, I, I know you're in the middle of negotiating, but with Bethany, would those also cover overnight?
That would be the plan. Um, I, again, I, I don't want to commit to it only because there's nothing fully fleshed out, but the idea would be that they would be utilized for the residents, and residents typically have the need overnight.
Right, um, I guess my, my question is, what's to prevent a resident, uh, from parking their second car? Or, you know, if, if for whatever reason, somebody doesn't like the garage, if, you know, if they've got that first spot closest to the door and they don't like it or something, what's to keep them from parking one or even both their cars on Park Drive, where we know there's, you know, I, I drove out there a couple of weekends ago and on a Saturday afternoon, and, you know, pretty much every on-street spot is taken. A lot of those houses don't have their own driveways. What's to keep new residents from parking on Park Drive? If it's, you know, it's obviously, it's closer than having to walk down and across the street to Mississippi.
Sure, so there's two things. One is, um, practicality, which I'll circle back to. One is, um, and the other one is, is by lease. So part of the lease that we're talking about, that in every residential lease, it would say you're entitled to one space, um, within the building that comes with it. Part of that language, and again, I've worked on these types of leases before, would say that i, if you have a vehicle, you have to, you have to park it in your space. Um, you cannot choose not to. Now, you're going to ask, which is a fair question, how is that really enforceable? What if somebody just stops for five minutes to run in? Well, that leads to my first point that I'm circling back to. I can tell you, I, I have, uh, like at my house, for example, I have a tandem-style driveway, um, where my wife and I choose to both park in the driveway, um, one behind the other, because I would much rather do that than leave my car in a public right-of-way where I'm much more likely to get dinged. So if I have the space, practically speaking, what we've seen, people are going to use it. If you, if, if you have a space and it's free, you're, you're going to use it.
Right, but for the spot in the building, I think that's probably true. For the spot that's, you know, down in the cross in the Mississippi Lot or across in the Bethany Lot, I don't know if that's, if that's a certain. Um, similarly, I've got the same question about, you know, and I know it's hard because we don't know what the, what's going to go in the retail, and if it's going to be, you know, a shop of some sort, or if it could be an office or what have you, you know, what's to keep those customers or even workers from, you know, circling, hoping to find a spot that's closer? Uh, you know, something that doesn't have a two-hour restriction on it, something on Park Drive, that sort of thing. Both, you know, taking up the few spots that are there and potentially, you know, adding to traffic as people, you know, go around the loop.
Harold, can you answer that question?
Um, well, you can't stop somebody if, if they tried to find the spot on Park Drive North. I'm, I'll never say that's the case. If it's somebody who's a, uh, an employee of the commercial space, uh, they could certainly apply for a permit. The, uh, commercial space holder can apply for a permit so they could park a long term at the, uh, uh, lot number one. Or if it's somebody shorter, they can take the, uh, on-street parking on Main Street, which is free, or they can, uh, park in the three-hour permit area, uh, not permit area, metered area of lot number one, which is only twenty-five cents for an hour. So you do have those alternatives. I know when I went out there. So you do have those alternatives, I know when I went out there, um. Uh, I parked only one time on Park Drive uh North. Which was near the end of the line, closest to Main Street, all the other times I've, that I was there. I always found parking uh on Main Street itself.
Okay, um, I think that's all I got, thank you.
And Mr. Albert, just to clarify, in case it wasn't clear, um, within the building as well, there are two spaces that would be. For the commercial use, so, right, we've got fourteen spaces for the, for the twelve residential units plus commercial. Um, so the idea would be if it is an employ, if it's like a, if it's an office, for example. That person would have, that employee would have a a parking space in the building, um, and if it's some type of retail. Facility, again, the employee would park there and visitors would would find street parking the same way any visitors to any other use would.
Thank you.
Mr. Morgan, thank you, Mr. Albert, Mr. Morgan.
Yes, yes, thank you, sir. Again, a lot of the. A lot of the requests. And that I had concerns about have been touched upon in the last few, so at this time I have no questions.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan, Mr. Cardoza.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, thank you, Mr. Maltz, for your presentation, um. Miss Wine, some of my questions might have to do with uh functionality, so you might wanna jump in as well here. Uh, I'm gonna go over, I think some, some of what you've already addressed, um. Answers my questions, but just functionally, the fourteen spaces, twelve units, uh, you mentioned that there would be. Assigned spaces. Um, and that if for the retail space, um. Potentially, at least one of those extra, the additional units uh would go to the retail. Uh, business operating, is that?
That's the idea, yes.
Okay, so then I would, I would say, depending on what type of business. Um, that is, if they have, you know, a handful of employees, what I might suggest, um, is that the. You know, the the applicant has offered uh to reimburse the. Residents for the cost of additional spaces, I might suggest that they do the same for the um retail employees. Um, if necessary.
Hey, thank you, I will note that down.
Of course, thank you, um, okay. And as far, as far as, um. The twenty four hour, I'm sorry, not twenty four hour, but the the parking available, the two hour parking on Main Street. I'm trying to recall, I I think we would need some additional, some maybe improved striping for the spots available in front of the. Residents, is, is there, is there, I'm trying to remember the the signage, um. Basically explaining that, uh, especially right in that, in in front of the lot, is, is. Is there nothing there uh to indicate? Aside from just regular, if anyone could jump in for me here.
Are you talking about the area of the site frontage where the drive is for the building?
Yes.
Park Drive North?
No, not, not Park Drive North, on Main Street.
On Main Street, I'm just, just give me one, I'm looking for photos.
Okay.
No, uh, all I see here, I'm looking, uh, north on Main Street. Across to the left where the three, the three-story brick building is. Which has that check cashing on the corner at Park Drive uh North. And all I see, I mean, you've got a crosswalk. And uh, you got your double yellow line, you got your white striping, you know, your lane lines, but I don't see. I can't see any striping for parking spaces.
Okay.
There are signs present which identify what the parking requirements are, restrictions.
Alright.
That's eight A M to eight P M, Monday to Saturday, two hour.
Okay, that's good, yeah, I doubt that would. Probably fall to the, that would probably fall to the municipality, but um, just wanted to, just bringing that up, thank you for clarifying, the signage is probably sufficient. When it comes to exiting the driveway, you stated that there is a, the the driveway is set fourteen feet back from the curb, is that?
So that would be the, that would be the driver's eye, based on design standards, roadway design standards. The sight distance point would be fourteen and a half feet back from the curb. That happens to be the fourteen and a half foot point, if you measured it along the the center of an exiting vehicle in the garage. That's just about right on the plan, it's just about right underneath the garage door.
Okay.
Uh, when you're looking to the left, uh, towards the uh, the sidewalk to the left. You can see the sidewalk, the, from that point, you can see the sidewalk for the whole frontage of, along the whole frontage. Of the uh site, if you look to the right, you can see across the uh, in front of the corner of the uh garage door. Uh, opening, and you can see all the way down along the sidewalk to the curb return uh at Main Street.
Okay, so you could even see. People turning left off of Main Street onto Park Drive North, which would be.
Yes, it's wide open. In fact, the standards, the sight distance standards, stopping sight distance standards with taking in into account grade. I checked the highway design book, the roadway design book, and we hit it, seventy three feet was required. And we have exactly seventy three feet, and that's based on a fifteen mile an hour uh design speed reflected. And which is more than what you need because the book also says turns are typically taken at ten miles an hour or less. On this type of condition, and I applied a standard of fifteen, which is the lowest in the table.
The the turns from, so you're you're positing based on that, that the turns off of Main Street onto Port.
Main Street, on the Park Drive North, yes.
Okay, I get, that was another one of my questions, how fast are we anticipating people to make that turn and um. No, but thank you for clarifying the the visibility on that uh exiting the driveway, but. And I don't recall if this was included in previous testimony, will there be any signage inside the driveway for those exiting it? Reminding them to either slow, watch for pedestrians, oncoming traffic, uh, anything to that effect, if not, I would suggest that we. You know, make that a condition.
Yeah, I don't think we spec'd it out now, but I think it's a very good suggestion, I think coupled with the warning system, I I. I'm always about safety, I think that's a great idea.
Alright, terrific.
Chairman, Chairman, may I ask a question though to Mr. Cardoza's excellent question about the striping? Since that's the county, yeah, thank you, um, I thought John's question was excellent, excellent about the striping. It is a county road, so that wouldn't be a municipality issue, would then have to get the approval of the county.
Understood, thank, thank you, Mayor McCartney, um, I believe that, yeah, given. You know, that my uh fellow board members have also asked some great questions here, I've, I've nothing further, thank you both.
Because those, Ms. Capfer.
Thank you, Chairman, um, and thank you, Mr. Maltz, uh. One question I have is about uh landscaping at the um, the driveway exit, does that. Does a proposed landscaping impact anything that you've said about, um, say, distance uh for vehicles exiting? The parking garage?
Well, the, any landscaping would have to be kept clear of the uh sightline. Um, I think, I I don't know the height of the uh landscaping, I know uh, I had a plan, a small scale plan. Uh, but it's hard to tell exactly what's there, I think it's clear, but if it's not. Uh, it would have to be adjusted to maintain adequate sightline. I am, I'm very clear on that on every project I ever produce a report for.
Okay.
Um, Har- yeah, and Harold, just to be clear, I'm looking at the landscape plan, it shows on either side, um, three. I'm gonna butcher the name here, A B's Nordemania Golden Spreaders, which have a height of maximum three feet, it looks like.
And then, um, just one more question about um, the the distance of the the access point from the intersection. Are are there typically guidelines for that, you know, is there any concern about, um, you know, the proximity of that? The driveway entrance and exit from the intersection of of Main and Park Drive North?
Not that I know of. I mean, we're, we're about seventy feet to the center of the drive. Is about seventy five feet from the center line of Main Street, and any vehicles turning off of Main. Um, are going up a grade of about twelve to thirteen percent. So not only are they making a a turn at less than ten miles an hour. Onto a perpendicular roadway which has no parking along the curb on the left side, so that view is wide open. But the grade itself is gonna cause deceleration of the vehicle. So it it is a slow maneuver.
Great, thank you, I have no further questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Capfer, Mr. Hazel, do you have any questions?
Yes, I believe I do, um, Mr. Mr. Maltz, uh. Was a parking study or parking availability study, I'm not sure what you exactly referred to it as. Was that done as part of your analysis in terms of what parking spaces were available at any particular time of the day?
No, there was no parking study done, what was done was an inquiry with the uh police department document section. To find out how many uh permits were issued. Uh, and lot number one, the Harrison, Mississippi lot, uh, that was done on a couple of times. Uh, the the, and from that, we were able to determine how many permits, twenty four hour permits would be available to purchase. There was no parking study done in the area, other than uh just my observations uh on the numerous times that I came to this area.
Okay, so there is not a sense of even though parking is permitted, uh, with the 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 out, the two hour limit, I believe. On the street uh surrounding the area and and Main Street, there's no sense of while that is permitted. What the availability was there or on uh Park Drive North at different times of the day, on different days.
No, I do know Park Drive North would get pretty parked up, you know, I did observe that. Along Main Street in the two hour parking area, that's generally where I would park when I came to the site, and I always got parking. Within the area of Park Drive North, and but it was dynamic, you saw people coming and going, there are stores. Uh, along Main Street in that area, and parking was coming and going, I could, I get there. And I might get one of the last spaces, and within a few minutes, a few spaces would open up, it was dynamic, that's why I call it dynamic.
Okay, and this is a a particularly interesting situation where, uh, while the uh. The 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 subject property fronts on Main Street, which is where the zone. Uh, that it's in basically is limited to, everything to the west of it. Uh, fronting on uh Park Drive North is in a different zone. Um, here's a situation where every vehicle that comes out of that building has to go around the. The 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 loop, if you will, of um, of of Park Drive North. I mean, have you seen a situation like that before? I mean, it's, it's really taking, um. What in my opinion is probably the intent of having the uh more intensive use of the zone. Uh, on Main Street, but imposing or introducing it, my 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 correction, introducing it into the. The 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 lesser, the area that's, uh, the area that's contemplated for a a lesser intensive use. That being the neighborhood that abuts it to the west.
Well, I think what you're asking is really a planning question, um, in terms of traffic. Once again, this is not a large, twelve units is not a large development. It's not by any means a large traffic generator, and the commercial use, I feel would be. Primarily oriented the traffic on Main Street. Uh, except for the one or two spaces that would be allocated within the parking garage. For the commercial user, which what I think would be somebody that might work there and be there for eight hours or ten hours. Um, but in terms of the majority of your question, I think that really is uh for the planet to answer.
Okay.
I don't get into zoning.
Okay, and one last question, and and I think this should be in your purview, um, based on the uh. Layout of the building itself, the location of the building relative to the adjoining uh neighborhoods, et cetera. Um, would, would it have been a better alternative, uh, if the. Parking uh garage were uh made to exit onto Main Street?
I can't answer that, just off the top of my head, I've never studied it, never considered it, was never proposed. So I've never evaluated that condition, and uh, I don't know what the county's position would be to having a. Another drive onto uh the county road, uh, so I can't answer your question, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hazel, Mr. Jordan.
I have no questions at this time, thank you.
Thank you, okay, um, Mr. Maltz, I have one question, so when they, when uh the people park in the garage. Do they have to walk outside the building to get into the building, or they can, is there an entrance from the garage into the building?
Um, I think uh, well, I hate to do this, but I defer to the site engineer.
Yeah, um, Chairman, I can answer that, there, there is.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, there is definitely an interior um access into the lobby area for the residential um use, the commercial use. Uh, would, there, there's like a ramp directly out and then back in, but the residential use, you could remain internal the whole time.
Okay, excellent, thank you, uh, okay, and do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Maltz on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified. Do any member of the public have any question for Mr. Maltz, please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have a, we have a couple.
Thank you.
Oh, now we have several, okay, first up is uh M K A, please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you very much, M K Adams, Park Drive South. Um, Mr. Maltz, obviously you're a legend, so I tip my cap to you, but I have many questions about some of your uh analysis. Um, you just recently stated that the the driveway entry point is seventy feet from the. Intersection of Park Drive North and Main Street, is that correct?
You know, it depends where you measure it from, if you measure it from the s- the center line of the drive. Coming on to uh Park Drive uh North to the center of uh. Uh, Main Street, it's approximately seventy five feet, if you're measuring. Uh, from the uh driver's eye position, you know, along Park Drive, it's about seventy three. Uh, if you wanna measure it to the curb line of Main, uh, Main Street, it's something less, it depends what reference point you wanna use.
Well, the reference point of making that turn off of Main onto Park Drive North. The driveway is thirty point one seven feet from the curb. Along Main Street. So that is less than two car lengths from the entrance to the garage to the, to the. The corner of Park Drive North and Main Street, correct?
Well, I have to correct you, I have the uh site plan in front of me.
Mm-hmm.
If I go to the eastern side, the very right side.
Share that on the screen so we can all see what you're talking about?
Uh, no, I can't, I don't have the facility to do that.
Harold, Harold, I can bring it up if you like.
That would be great, thank you.
And Harold, you'll just tell me where you want me to go.
Okay, it's that up.
Hold on, if that's, yeah, one second. This is the screen.
If you go from, you're exiting the garage.
Can you zoom in, please?
Sure, I'm gonna.
Thank you.
If you're exiting the garage, the right side, the very right side of the garage opening. And you then go towards Main Street to where it would intersect the. Extension of the Main Street westerly curb line, that actually scales forty two feet. If you then consider the fact that there's a parking lane, uh, uh, along. Main Street immediately before Park Drive, uh, that somebody who was wanting to make a right turn up. You have another eight feet, that would be fifty feet, uh, to get to the position, the mi- minimum position. Of a car making a right turn, it would actually be a couple of feet more.
The right turn would be coming southbound on Main Street, so it's on the opposite side of the street.
Yes, but he'd be pushed out another eight feet because of the parking lane. So it's forty two feet from the right, from the easterly edge of the garage door to the curb line of Main Street. Plus you have another eight feet pushed out for a parking uh area. Along the the westerly curb line of Main, if you're gonna make a right turn, and then the driver wouldn't be sitting right on the doorway. And then the driver wouldn't be sitting right on the doorway, uh, on the door of a parked car. He would be a couple of feet further out. So you'd be fifty feet plus.
So a car coming southbound on Main Street, perhaps when you observed this when you were here, the few times you were. Uh, that, that's a blind corner, the building you referenced before with the check cashing on the lower end. From the first corner, I mean, so that's a blind corner, so. Uh, again, and, and I think you're referencing books and standards, but you said. If I'm correct, a fifteen mile per hour, a ten mile per hour turn speed, is that correct?
It's a fifteen mile an hour design speed for the site, this stopping site this. However, the book says that the turns are to, for these, these types of turns, these right angle turns here. Are typically done at ten miles an hour or less. But I applied the fifteen mile an hour design speed from the table because that's the lowest value that they gave. They didn't have a ten mile an hour. Also, in terms of what you brought up about the blind corner. I did observe what you were talking about and in fact looked at it in the field. Uh, because that corner, that building, uh, which has the check cashing, it squares off at the corner. So what happens is a driver is proceeding southbound, he's not riding along the curb line. He's more towards the center line of the street because there's a parking lane and he's offset from the parking lane. And therefore, as he approaches, as he approaches the corner. He does, he does see around the corner, uh, because he is pushed out towards the center of the street.
But which also allows for uh, a more increased speed. He's not inhibited by that parking lane. Um, and I'm sure many of my neighbors are going to ask questions about that, those who live in that vicinity.
Ma'am, 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 ask your, ask your question, please.
Yes, I am. I'm getting to Dr. Bagoff. I want to circle back to what Mr. Alper had asked about the, um, it suppose that a tenant declined. Their parking permit space in Lot One. And Mr. Wine, you said that the Mississippi, the parking lot, or Mr. Maltz, you said it was about six hundred feet from the building, right?
That's right.
Are you aware? Are you aware that de-camp bus lines went out of business in April of twenty twenty-three because of low ridership?
Yes, in fact, for six years when my mother-in-law was receiving twenty-four hour care. I picked up and dropped off her aid at, at the de-camp spot right on the Mississippi. I'm very familiar with it.
So did you, did you hear Mayor McCartney in the, the special hearing for the Highlands Project? Speak about how tenants don't want to park far from home. That they really, they prefer a space as close as possible to their unit?
No, I never heard that comment. I wasn't present when that was made.
Um, she did talk about that and as Mr. Albert mentioned, um, that. A tenant, suggesting a tenant wants to park closer to home. So what's the incentive that they would then be willing to park at the Mississippi Bus Loop? Parking lot A.
Incentive would be they need a second space. The first space would be within the building garage itself.
But what would prevent them from, what would prevent them from just looking for street parking as close as possible to their building?
Because they wouldn't be able to park twenty-four hours on street. There is no parking permitted in West Orange between two and five AM.
Well, Mr. Maltz.
They, they have to find someplace to put their car.
Um, you said you didn't do a parking study of the Park Drive Loop, correct?
No, I didn't. I drove it, but I didn't do a study.
Well, then you would, if you did, then you would know that the residents of Park Drive.
Ma'am, ma'am, ma'am.
I'm getting there, Dr. Bagoff. I'm getting.
He did, he didn't testify to that. Do not enter information that was not testified to, please.
Mr. Maltz, you talked about household characteristics as uh, an influence on parking demands. Oh, what?
Did you say that again?
You mentioned that household characteristics. Impact the, the need for parking in a building, correct?
Correct.
Well, are, are you aware of a, of a website, Data USA, which collects information from. Um, the US Census Bureau and the American Community Survey?
No, I'm not aware of that one.
According to Data USA.
Ma'am, ma'am, no, no, ma'am, no, you, he didn't testify to that and you can't either. Thank you. Ask another question.
Are you aware of a report by the North Jersey Transportation Planning Authority? That calculated that households in New Jersey generate an average four trips per day?
Uh, no, I'm not. I use the IT Trip Generation publication. Which did, which has weekday, uh, which has weekday values.
So what percentage of residents in West Orange use public transportation to commute to work?
I can't answer that.
Uh-huh. Um, hmm, fifteen point one percent.
Ma'am, ma'am, the next time you testify, I'm gonna cut you off, just saying.
That's fine.
Have to be fair.
That's fine. Um, getting back to the Bethany Church Permit Lot. You suggested that that would be um, an overnight parking option, correct?
I never suggested that at all. My client, as, as Mr. Wine has spoken about. They've been speaking to the church. I had no contact with the church. I was never involved in any discussions on that matter whatsoever. I know nothing at all about what's happening there.
Um, but you did say there would be no transient parking in buildings, so that applies to the retail space?
Yes, the spaces are going to be assigned. There's, there's no transient parking. In other words. If I'm not a resident, I just can't drive there and pull in and take somebody's space. These are going to be assigned spaces. Transit means just casual come and go people.
Were you aware that when, when cars do park on Main Street in front of the bus stop you referenced on the west side of Main Street? It blocks the sightlines of vehicles that are exiting off Park Drive South?
When I was there, there were absolutely no cars parked on Main Street along the west curb line. From the bus stop uh, sign all the way to Park Drive South. There was nobody there. What I did observe is sometimes somebody would pull into the bus stop area, run into the corner uh, store. Uh, that was, that check cashing store, and with a minute or two would run back out. You know, that I did observe, but I never saw anybody at any time park, uh, when I was there, park in that other stretch.
You didn't calculate how that would impact the site distance for drivers. Watching traffic come south on Main Street, is that correct?
No, I didn't, and I don't think it's, it's relevant. Anybody coming out of Park Drive South. Is gonna have to use due caution like they would at any intersection when they pull out. There's a stop sign, they stop, and they pull up uh, according to their ability to see up the street and make their maneuver.
Are you aware of the Vision Zero Report commissioned by West Orange?
Um, I haven't seen it. I've heard of it. In fact, the mayor's mentioned it to me, but I haven't seen it.
Did the mayor mention that all of Main Street has been designated a high injury network by Vision Zero?
I haven't heard anything at all about the findings of the Vision Zero Report.
Um, you mentioned your daughter's apartment in a building in Hoboken. How many other buildings in West Orange have garage warnings or speaker systems?
I can't answer that. I don't know.
Would you agree that that's not a common occurrence for resident buildings in West Orange?
I, this is, this is specific for this site based on a comment made by the board. That's what was responded to by the architect and engineer. Uh, I can't account for uh, what other sites uh, there are in West Orange that do or don't have it. Or the circumstances. So that's, that's not a question I can answer.
How many properties, um, the Park Drive Loop, single and multifamily do not have driveways?
There was no testimony to that. Next.
Well, in relation to parking availability and off-site parking.
No testimony to that, ma'am. Next.
He referenced off-site parking as a reason that they should get the variance or for, or a diminished RSIS guideline.
Yeah, Ms. Adams, the, the testimony regarding the off-site parking was regarding the uh, the permit parking or the Bethany Church parking.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna start my questions now and let somebody else take over. I'll be back.
Thank you. Does anybody else have questions for Mr. Maltz about his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have Susan Lesnick. Please state your name and address for the record.
Susan Lenchek, Eagle Rock Avenue, a forty-nine-year resident of the Park Drive Loop. I'm following up on a question that was attempted before, and that is. Uh, regarding what would prevent residents from parking, residents of the proposed building. From parking on the Park Drive Loop overnight when in fact. Is allowed overnight on the Park Drive Loop because people there have no other options of where to park.
Uh, what is the question?
I'm, I'm saying what would prevent residents of the proposed building from parking overnight. On the Park Drive Loop. This is people who do not have a space inside uh, the parking garage. They can park overnight on the Park Drive Loop that is allowed. So what would prevent them from doing that? Even if they had a permit to park several blocks away, but they decide they did not want. To park several blocks away and they could cruise around looking for a spot. What would prevent them from doing that?
So Ms. Lenchek, I'll, I'll address that as a matter, as a legal matter. There's two things, and I, I responded to Mr. Alper about them before, but I'm happy to respond. One is you can put it in a lease and make it, make it, uh, make it a lease violation if you, if you do that. If you have a second car. You're being, if you have one car, you're getting a, a space in the building. If you have two cars, you're getting a space in the building and a space somewhere else. You can put in a lease provision that it would be a violation if you, if you don't do that. So one, it's a, it's a, it's a matter of landlord tenant. The second thing is if this board were to condition any approval of this application. On that lease provision being enacted, then it would additionally become a zoning enforcement issue. I deal in West Orange with, with your zoning official, um, and your construction code quite frequently on a number of different properties. They're excellent. They are, they are top-notch. Um, actually, Ms. Ms. Adams, um, Ms. Gary Adams. Um, she's, she's top-notch and she, things that are in her purview that become zoning enforcement issues, she's on top of them. So you could make it both a, a landlord tenant issue and a zoning enforcement issue if this board would so condition our approval on that.
Um, okay, I would question that, uh, but I, I can't say that because that's not about the testimony. Because I have seen violations before that were not, that were not addressed. Okay, for, for now, that's enough. I'll probably be back.
Thank you. Does any other member of the public have any questions for Mr. Maltz about testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have. Hang on. We have Bill. Please state your name and address for the record. There you go. Bill, you there? Can you unmute?
Hello, can you hear me?
Oh, yeah, now we can.
Yeah, I don't know what happened. I heard you guys all through the whole thing, and when you clicked on me, all of a sudden this sound dropped. Okay, anyway, um, yes, my name is Bill Mills. I'm a twenty-six-year resident of Park Drive North. Uh, and thank you all very much for your testimony tonight, and I just want to commend Harold Maltz. You are an amazing hired gun. Uh, you can tell you've been doing this for a long time and you are. Uh, backing your clients up very well. Uh, but I'm coming back to your, your. Numbers on the parking spaces. I hate to come back to it again because I know Mayor McCarthy already kind of reviewed it with you, but. I kind of feel like I'm in an Abbott and Costello routine here. So we went from twenty-four spaces plus four spaces, twenty-three spaces for the residents, four for commercials, twenty-seven total. Down to less than half of that. Um, I get you, I get the two-space credit for EV, even though, you know, that, that's. Just given because of an environmental issue and really doesn't uh, make for more spaces. Um, I get the mass transit credit of three spaces. Although, uh, as has been testified by other people here, mass transit is really sorely underused by the residents of Park Drive Loop. But what I'm not getting is how the one car per lease. Takes away your need to fulfill the other parking spaces. Um, and that to me just means more tenants are forced to. Put their cars out on Park Drive Loop.
Well, as I went over with the mayor. It came down to the twenty-seven spaces, which was twenty-three for the residential based on RSIS. And four for the commercial, uh, was reduced by two, as you pointed out, two for the EV. Minus three for the mass transit came down to twenty-two. We have fourteen on site, which leaves an eight-space deficiency. So it was proposed to, to uh, reduce it and get it into acceptable condition. Um, and reflective of the one-bedroom, two-bedroom condition where you very possibly might not need a second car. Uh, to release restrict the uh, parking, the one space per unit. Therefore, you have twelve residential spaces, parking spaces, minus the two EV credit. Minus the three mass transit, then add in the four commercial that you need. That comes to an onsite need of eleven spaces and we have fourteen proposed. To make up any shortfall for a second space, if somebody has a. Second car, that's where the uh, analysis and study came in. About uh, off-site parking resources for utilizing uh, twenty-four-hour permit, municipal permit parking. In the lot number one, the Harrison, Mississippi lot, which is just to the north off of Main Street. So that would make up any, any other shortfall there would be. And that's permitted by the RSIS specifically in their guidelines, and the board has given that uh, option to consider.
Okay, so um, forgive me because I'm not as familiar with.
You understood the numbers.
Yeah, I'm, forgive me because I'm, I'm not as, I'm not really that familiar with the RSIS guidelines. But I, I'm still having trouble following if they're mandating the number of spaces and you. Are taking away spaces from your. Tenants, how are you following the RSIS guidelines? Now, aren't you actually restricting your, your tenants? Who are the RSIS guidelines created for? For whose, whose rights and whose protection or, or whose safety?
Their guidelines is developed by the New Jersey, uh, uh, by New Jersey, the Residential Site Improvement Standards. Which specify maximum number of parking spaces and they give you rates. Based on the type of unit you have, whether it's a townhouse, condo, apartments, uh, whatever. And based on the number of bedrooms. As you have more bedrooms, the uh, per unit. The number of spaces uh, required per unit goes up. That's reflective of. Having more ownership of a vehicle with more bedrooms. It's very logical. And they identify, as I pointed out in my direct testimony. And it says, reviewers may allow fewer parking spaces when warranted. Factors that may affect parking include the following. One, household characteristics, that would be one-bedroom, two-bedroom, so forth. Access to mass transit, which we have, geographic location and off-site parking resources, which we have, which I've investigated. Um, I must tell you, the designation of uh, the restriction of one parking space per unit. And then overflow, uh, going into uh, public parking uh, permits is not an unusual situation. I represent of the municipalities which this exact situation comes up where they uh, have the municipal lots available. This is not unusual, what's being proposed here. This is not something that just dropped out of the sky.
O- okay, um, when you were here, did you by any chance uh, take a walk over to that uh, parking? Area over by Mississippi?
Absolutely. I counted it.
Okay, so, so.
Many times over here.
As an, as a normal human being, and people are generally like, a little on the lazy side. You expect people are gonna drive over to there, park their car there, carry their groceries or whatever. Back from there to the house if they can jump on a spot that's across the street on Park Drive North?
Well, I, I can't tell you exactly what they, I would think that if somebody had a need for a second car. And they were going to get groceries. and they were going to get groceries, if it was me, I would take the car that's in the garage and take that one out and I'd leave the one that's in the remote lot, uh, sit there. That's what I would do.
Well, there, there, you're speculating that, that your, your spouse is not gonna need the car while you're out to go to work or run an errand or pick up the kids from soccer.
I mean, you can create any hypothetical you want.
Yeah, I'm just, yeah, Mr. Mc-, Harold, one second. Mr. Mills, I'm just gonna say, and I don't mean to be disrespectful, but you know, with respect to Mr. Malz, you, you asked a hypothetical question, so you know, you're gonna get a bit of a hypothetical answer.
I mean, to be very honest with you, there's parking right on Main Street, right in front of, uh, the site i- in advance or ju- just beyond the, uh, uh, bus stop. You're allowed to park there, which is, which is, which is a short distance down from the entrance to the, uh, uh, residential, uh, entrance on Main Street. Somebody, if they had bags, they could pull up in that location and take their bags out, legally park, and walk their stuff into the, uh, building and come out and move their car. They could do that too.
Okay, but you pointed out that you're, you're not allowed to overnight park there. Um, in your, in your uh, study, uh, quote-unquote, study of the area and the, and, and the parking, uh, were you ever there in a, in a overnight or, uh, maybe a S- a Saturday scenario when?
No, I wasn't.
No, okay. Um, because there's, there is no, no place for the residents, the current residents to park. And now if you're bringing in twelve to twenty-four, uh, possibly more additional vehicles, uh, it's, I just see that is causing, um, major problems, additional problems in the area with people who already don't have a place to park their car and people who are dangerously and illegally parking um, in areas where, um, rescue vehicles might need to negotiate a turn, but there might be vehicles at any given time parked in those spaces because it's just the way it is.
Yeah, I'm not, I, was there a question, Mr. Mills, for Mr. Malz?
Um, um, I'm sorry, there, there was not a question there. Uh, forgive me.
Do you have any questions, sir?
That's, that, that is it. That is it for my questions. I'll reserve anything else I have to say for comments.
Any other members of the public have any questions for Mr. Malz about his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have Weeden McPherson. Please state your name and address for the record.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Weet Ha McPherson, and I live at Twenty-Six Park Drive South. Um, I've lived here for thirty-two years. So, um, it seems as though Mr. Carino, Mr. Alper, Mr. Hazel, um, asked and Mary Kay asked the questions that I was going to ask for some of them. But I wanna get back to um, the Mary's question about Park Drive North and cars traveling south and west, I mean, south and north on Main Street. So, my question is, when you're traveling south to turn up Park Drive North, you have the visibility, yes, of the garage. But if you're traveling Park Drive, I mean, I'm sorry, uh, Main Street North, you really don't have that visibility um, to, to visualize that garage or the garage is visible to the, to us. And if you bring up that picture of the building, we could, I probably can see it better. That corner, as you turn in to Park Drive North from the north side of driving up Main Street.
I'm happy to do that. Do you want the, uh, the civil plan or the building rendering?
The, the, the building, the actual picture of the building.
The picture of the building.
The beautiful picture of the building, yes.
This one.
Yes. So when you're coming, making that corner, this picture depicts it looking beautiful to turn, but when you're turning up Park Drive North, the way I see it, you're not going to have the visibility of the garage there as you do coming down the south side. So, I think you would need to put some kind of alarm right on Main Street of that building, on the corner of that building.
Um, so, Ms. McPherson, just so I understand, and I know it's not a question, but I'm happy to address it.
And I, I know, I'm not even asking the question right because I'm telling you what to do, but-
And it, and it's fine because I, I wanna clear up the issue, and if it's a safety issue, we should address it. You're saying that you're turning, if you're this white car over here, for example, this-
Right, turning in to-
You're turning in, your concern is, is the visibility from the garage to, to that vehicle turning?
Right.
So I think, I mean, Harold, I think you did testify about that site distance being something like seventy-three feet, but I'll let you do it a few-
But you know, all of those feet stunts mean anything to me, okay?
Right, so I think, I think what you're, and Ms. McPherson, forgive me for, you know, you, you live there. I don't live there, so this is just my guess. Right now, there's a giant retaining wall. Currently, here, this retaining wall continues, right? Um, there's also a lot of, at least from what I saw, a lot of, uh, there were recently a lot of trees over here. This is gonna be cleared, as you can see. This rendering is pretty demonstrative of, of the actual um, scenario. I think one of the board members actually asked about like the plantings that are here. They're shrubs, so they're, that line of site's not impacted. Um, Harold, while he gave a lot of feet, indicated that from a practical perspective and a safety perspective, you do have that site distance to be able to, to visualize that vehicle. But yeah, to the extent that an additional warning signal is, is warranted or, or a good idea, we, we, I wanna be clear. I take no, my client takes no objection to that. I just, I would wanna confirm with your board professionals what that would look like.
Right, okay. All right, yeah, I'm concerned about that.
If it's a mirror, it's a mirror, but yeah.
Yeah, I'm definitely concerned about that. And then traveling up, um, one of our residents mentioned before, when we were at the site, when there's inclement weather and there's snow right there at the bottom of that hill, if we make a stop at that garage, we will have to really w- we'll probably be stuck down at the bottom of the hill because you have to have that traction to keep going. And if that alarm is telling us the garage is coming up and we have to stop, that's a potential accident right there.
Harold, is there anything you can speak to there?
Well, not really. I mean, this is something that, uh, would have to be, uh, uh, it's a municipal roadway, and it would, because of the grade, would have to be given some sort of priority as to plowing and salting.
And Harold, I guess my follow-up to Ms. McPherson's concern, um, would any, any such approval, for example, uh, you know, of this project be subject to any police and fire department requirements as well?
Of course, a- any application is. And any board I, I've represented, that's one of the last things I put in my review reports, that it's always subject to police and fire and other professional comments.
Okay.
Okay, and Mr. Malz, again, I respect all of your studies that you presented to us. Um, and I, you talked about, um, the dynamic parking and the times that you have been at our, in our area, but we frequent this area all the time. I go to some of the retail spaces down here on Main Street, um, especially the nail salon, the Chinese restaurant. You park there, you, I think you mentioned that you've parked and you've always found a parking space. I never find a parking space there, down there.
I must have been lucky.
You were lucky, but we live here, and if I've been here many times more than you, wouldn't you say that I, I, I just, I'm I'm lost with what you're saying?
In fact, I can tell you, the, uh, spots that I typically got, I got one spot going up Park Drive North, right at the corner, the, to the side of that, uh, place that, uh, does check cashing. That was the only time I ever parked on Park Drive North. All the other times, I got, twice I got a spot right in front of that store on Main Street facing southbound, and three times I got a spot right away. I didn't have to roam around for anything. Right on Park, uh, above the, uh, bus stop going northbound, directly opposite Park Drive North on Main Street.
Well, you were very lucky, and I frequent Main Street many, many times, constantly.
It wa- it wasn't a survey. I'm just giving you an observation of, uh, what happened when I was there. I don't know what you're saying. I'm just saying, and I also noticed there was turnover, uh, on the street.
Okay, well, I, I have appointments and I can't make my appointment on time unless I-
Am, am, can you, can you ask him a question about his testimony, please? Thank you.
Yes, yes. Sorry, um, we get lost in this. Please forgive us.
That's okay. That's a lot of latitude, lot of latitude.
Okay, so, um, yes, you were very lucky, but, um, there's just, it's just too congested. That's all I'm saying. Don't you think that you would have to come, seeing is believing, you would have to come many times. We live in this area. So you would have to frequent this area many times. Could you do that? Would you do that?
I, just casually, I wouldn't be going out there. I was specifically hired to do something for this job, which is this project, which is a very small project, as, as they go. Very small trip generator, is parking that's being provided onsite, and there's off-site parking that can be provided both on-street and in particular, the permit lot, which also has metered capacity.
Okay, and I feel the same way as Mr. Um, Bill, Mr. Mills. Um, I, wouldn't you think that people would feel comfortable, especially at night, to find a parking space on Park Drive North or Park Drive South? And it's very congested on these streets. People don't have driveways. I'm fortunate to have a driveway, but there's a lot of tenants that do not have driveways.
Yes, I, I observed that.
Okay, all right, well, thank you.
Thank you very much. Do any other members of the public have any question for Mr. Malz on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have Google Seven A.
Yes, it's Barbara Torriello. Um, I'm at Three North Park Drive, uh, been on the uh, Park Drive Loop for seventy-four years. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay, um, the house that I'm in now is fifty-one years. It is directly across diagonal across from the property. Um, many of the questions have been brought up that I had. Um, but the, one of them was asked in a previous, uh, meeting, how long, or how does the vehicles coming up the street, how long does it take for them to open the garage? Is there a delay? Is there a, the, the key, the fob? How far away do they have to be or close to, to open the garage?
Hey, that, uh, was a question I think that was asked in a prior, um, meeting.
Yes, it was asked, but I don't know that it was answered.
Yeah, I, I don't know specifically what it is. I do know that the residents will have a key fob that will activate the, uh, garage door. Uh, I don't know what the range is, but typically I think the resident could hit the fob, uh, from what's been discussed with me, and before they get right to the garage door, apparently they could, uh, activate the garage door, uh, further away, so it could be opening as they begin to approach the garage driveway, uh, which would speed up the, uh, operation. But I think somebody else on the mechanical end uh, of, of that, that feature would have to speak to that. I don't have the details.
Okay, and that, when you were at your, uh, site visits, um, I, I don't see people coming up, uh, making those turns at fifteen miles per hour. Um, I'm often outside trying to make my garden look pretty, which has been tough this year in the heat, but um, they're, they're nailing it as they're coming up off of Main Street in either directions.
Ma'am, ma'am, you're testifying. Ma'am, kind-
Okay.
Ask a question, please.
That, that leads into coming off of Main Street, were you ever here, uh, for a visit in inclement weather, specifically ice or even an inch of snow on the ground?
No, I wasn't.
Okay, so, do you believe that, that grade is, uh, is going to be, um, a problem as they have to come up and slow down to go into that garage? They have to slow down. They gotta wait for the door to open. It, when they have to re-accelerate to go in, they're gonna get stuck. I can guarantee it because you don't have-
Ma'am, you're, ma'am, you're testifying. Let's ask Mr. Malz questions about his testimony, please.
Okay, he did, he did say he did not observe it in inclement weather. That's, that was the point I was trying to make there.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, and he, uh, did he see during his site visits that there were, uh, many cars at different times of day parked on the illegal side of the street?
No, I didn't. I think maybe, uh, I might have seen one car one time. But otherwise, I didn't see people parked on, uh, the illegal side. I saw a lot of people parked on the other side where it is legal.
Yes, um, the, the parking, I can tell you're right opposite.
Ma'am, ma'am, don't tell us it, ma'am. Don't tell us anything. Ask him a question, please.
Okay, would you, would you believe that it's often that they're parked on the wrong side of the street?
I can't address that.
You would believe that, okay. Um, also, the parking in front of the retail. You're saying that there are so many parking places there. Uh, but, but yet the, the bus stop begins at the foot of North Park Drive, and it heads south a hundred and five feet. So the rea-, you're saying the bus stop is gonna not be, the people that are going to retail are not going to be able to park in front of the stores?
Well, there's a designated bus stop there. The hundred and five feet that I spoke about is what's in the municipal ordinance. That's the distance from the south curve line of Park Drive North going south a hundred and five feet along the west side of Main Street. What's posted out there now is not a hundred and five feet, it's actually posted at a hundred and thirty-seven feet from Park Drive South. So what I was, what I said was, if it was properly posted, there would be another thirty-two feet of parking available, which happens to be the size that could accommodate a delivery truck or an SQ thirty, and puts that space closer to the doors, either the refuse store or the, uh, doors, uh, to the building for residents, uh, so that it becomes more usable. And there's also another spot on the street, large space. So that's what I testified to, and that's in the municipal ordinance.
Okay, I don't know how to, I don't know how to ask any more questions and, uh, without testifying, but um, I believe, um, no, like, I don't believe anything. Do you believe that we had, we have enough parking? I, I, do you believe there's enough parking in this area? Okay, I'm gonna reiterate. Also, do you believe that the people are not gonna try and park their second car anywhere along on North Park Drive? Because I can tell you, people park from all over on North Park Drive, from across to the other apartments on the other side of Main Street.
So ma'am, I'm just gonna, I, I'm just gonna interject just, and again, I, I, I hope you don't think this is, uh, disrespectful. I'm just gonna say that the question that that has been asked and answered, um, was Mr. Malz testified that he doesn't believe people, based on the, the industry data, that people in a one- or two-bedroom apartment are likely to have a second vehicle, but that even if they do, we're providing the off-site option, which is, uh, which is one of the things that is strenuously and strongly considered by the Residential Site Improvement Standards. That, that was the testimony.
Okay, so all the solutions are, are, are on paper, but they're not in reality. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do any other members of the public have any questions for Mr. Malz on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have Jasmine Santana. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, uh, can you hear me?
Yes, go right ahead.
Hi, uh, Jasmine Santana, Park Drive South. Um, so a lot of the questions I had, um, were, were, uh, addressed, but, um, I was writing down some of the math that, um, Mr. Walz was providing as far as um, the parking space requirements, and there was a mass transit, um, uh, you know, RSIS standard that he subtracted three parking spots, and I was just wondering- Uh, you know, RSIS standard that he subtracted three parking spots, and I was just wondering What mass transit, other than the buses, there are, and does that qualify? Because, you know, there's not Like a grocery store to walk to around here or a train to walk to. It's just, you know, the bus stop.
Well, the the mass, it's it's mass transit that's available for people to take to uh Uh, go to work or shopping somewhere or even go to New York. The uh, the camp discontinued the service, but I believe there's another New York bus that the Mississippi bus loop. Uh, so if somebody had a job that worked in New York, instead of driving into the city, Uh, they could take a bus to to go uh to their employment. Uh, so that means you don't have to uh have a car for that, or it reduces the need to move a car in and out.
Okay, but Okay, um. Okay, cuz there's only the buses. There's no trains to get anywhere around that you can walk to. So I I didn't know if just that Qualified it to be, you know, mass transit. Um. Okay, and then uh, what's the other? Um, okay, so the other question I had was, um, the RSIS was what you're using for most of the standards and data that you were providing. But um, you were mentioning the garage width was or inside the garage, it was twenty-three feet, but at the Garage door was twenty-two feet, but RSIS requires twenty-four. Would that um, cause, you know, any type of hesitance making turns or make it harder to make turns for cars to go in and out?
Uh, no. The uh twenty-two is at the garage door, but maneuverability within the uh Garage drive itself is twenty-three feet. Uh, twenty-four is the standard, but certainly uh cars can maneuver adequately in a twenty-three-foot width. In addition, the, there's a limited number of spaces. There's no drive-through potential. The spaces are assigned to residents. So all of this reduces the uh activity, uh, the traffic activity. In addition, the traffic itself, the trip generation, the movements in and out, especially during peak hours Are extremely low. There's very, very little traffic generated by the twelve residential units. Uh, and the uh, just trying to think. And in terms of the consequently, somebody making the turn in There's very little likelihood that he's that he's gonna wind up having opposed by somebody coming out. In addition, you stay to the right. So, and a twenty-two-foot width, they they would be able to uh pass each other. You have two-lane roadways that are uh less than twenty-two foot width.
Yeah, but you know, you're on the roadway, you're not making ninety-degree turn, you know, coming in and out or You know, so you can pass two cars at The width inside the garage and also the garage door? Is that what the twenty-two is? It provides you to You know, go in and out at the same time at the garage door?
First of all, they'd be going at very low speed. Uh, uh, in and out of the garage. They're not going through there fifteen, twenty miles an hour. You know, this would be very low speed and coming out, uh, it's a stop control condition. So they're coming out from a stop and then uh making the turn to accelerate up the street. Uh, similarly, uh, the turn to make a left in, a vehicle would hit the button Before uh, before he gets into the, into the garage, uh, the drive itself. Uh, so it'd be opening as he's approaching, and then he would be able to slowly make his turn in. But this is a very low-volume, low-speed operation.
And and Harold, is twenty-two feet wide enough for two vehicles to pass each other?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and um, when there's cars parked on the Park Drive North side, on that right side? Um, can somebody make the turn uh out of the garage to the left and go up Park Drive North? Safely without, you know, getting near the other car or hitting the other car or anything?
That's been shown on the site plan prepared by the turning template, prepared by the site engineer. He provided that exhibit. It's in the site plans. And I think he testified to it previously.
Okay, we just didn't go over the size of the the garage, and I didn't know if that was definite, so, okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Do any of the members of the of the public have any questions for Mr. Maltz on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have Kevin Malanga. Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Ms. McCovern. Kevin Malanga, Ridge Road, West Orange. Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, Mr. Maltz. On residential streets, Is parking on the street more intense in daylight hours or nighttime hours?
Can't answer that, uh, because it depends on what's in the area. If you're a commercial area, obviously, and parking is permitted on the street, you'll have uh potentially more parking. That's a very wide-open question. I didn't testify.
I asked you with regard to residential streets.
Yeah, I I don't know if Mr. Maltz can answer.
Well, let Mr. 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 Wine, let Mr. Maltz say that he can answer or he can answer it.
Well, I didn't testify on that at all. Okay, so you're asking me an opinion about something I didn't prepare for this uh application.
All right, so what is the reason that you did not visit The site and these streets, Park Drive Northwest and South at night?
It's because I I honestly didn't feel it was necessary.
And you didn't feel it was necessary for what reason?
Because we were providing parking on site, and there was an alternative, providing overflow parking in other locations. That we wouldn't be using Park Drive uh for overflow parking.
So you had no opportunity to see Park Drive Northwest and South At night to see whether cars were parked there irrespective of your belief that there is a municipal ordinance prohibiting that.
I didn't go out there then, at those times.
Did you observe parking lot number one at night?
Uh, I've observed that many times over a six-year period. As I previously stated.
Did you observe it in the context of preparing for this application at night?
No, not at night, but my observations were all during the late morning or early afternoon.
All right, so you didn't have an opportunity to see whether all the cars that are parked there have a permit? Or the, whether there are cars that are parked there without permits?
That that, I I'm just gonna object on the basis of the testimony was there are, there are And Harold, correct me if I'm wrong, forty-something spaces that are non-permit spaces. And then there are twenty-eight spaces that are permit-only spaces. Is that correct?
Correct. There's forty-six uh meter and uh twenty uh twenty-eight uh Uh, permit.
So, Mr. Maltz, is it your testimony that to park at night, it requires a permit?
If you're parking in a permit space, yes, it does. It's a twenty-four-hour permit.
And the non-permit space, is it permissible to park there at night?
Two, uh, not from two AM to five AM.
So that's my question. Did you observe parking lot number one at night to determine whether there are cars parked there without permits?
Not recently. In past years, I have, cuz I parked there myself.
So you parked there yourself at night without a permit?
Not in a permit space, in a metered space. I never parked in a permit space.
Now, sir, with respect to the parking garage itself. You reviewed the plans, am I right?
Yes.
Now, if you look at the plans, is it possible to bring the plans for the parking garage up onto the screen?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Wine.
Sure.
Now, the size of the parking space where the dimensions are delineated on the third space from the left. Where the crosshatch indicates the starting point of the line at the wall of the parking garage. Is that the actual wall of the parking garage?
You have to ask the architect that. I assume it is. But uh, cuz they're dimensioning it to that point, so I would assume that's where some sort of obstruction starts.
All right, so if, uh, Mr. Wine, if you could please scroll to the right, towards the entrance. All right, so Mr. Maltz, if a car is parked in one of those spots at the very beginning, Close to the the first couple of spots, close to the garage door. If a car is not parked right up against the wall, The bumper of the car, whether it be the front or the rear bumper of the car, Will overhang the entrance of the garage door. Is that correct?
Not necessarily. Depends on the size of the car.
All right.
The space is nine by eighteen. The space is in the form to the RSIS. Uh, vehicles run up to, I I know Uh, cars like minivans and such are about seventeen feet long, which is one foot less than the uh space length. So uh, even if they didn't go close to the wall, they they'd be contained.
Are there some vehicles that are longer than seventeen feet?
There's, there could be, but it's not like the design vehicle shows nineteen feet. And there's certainly vehicles that are shorter, such as your Honda Civics and Accords.
Harold, eighteen feet is a standard space, correct?
Correct. Nine by eighteen feet conforms.
If a person has a Ford F-150, would that fit in the space without overhanging the entrance of the garage?
Well, that's, that's a very large vehicle. It's a pickup. And uh, I have to look at the dimensions, you know, uh, uh. I think the type of thing, if somebody came in with a vehicle that large, that uh, they they would look at where he would get assigned.
All right, I have no other questions. Thank you, Mr. Maltz. Thank you, Mr. Wine.
Sure.
Thank you. Do any other members of the public have any questions for Mr. Maltz on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
We have two members of the public that have already spoken. Do you wanna let them speak again?
Right ahead.
Ms. Lessick, please state your name and address again for the record. Susan. Maybe she did it by accident? Oh, all right, she's back again. I'm gonna try again.
Okay.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Susan Lencheck, Eagle Rock Avenue, a forty-nine-year resident of the Park Drive Loop. I'm following up on uh questions by Ms. McPherson and um Ms. Torriello. I just wanted to, Mr. Maltz, did you consider that in the winter, When the sun is positioned in the southern part of the sky, With the three-story building now going to be there with very small setback, That the bottom part of Park Drive North, where it's very steep, would receive no sunlight at all? So that anything that, uh, any products that have been applied to the streets to try to melt snow Uh, would not get the benefit of sunlight to dry it out, so would refreeze, thereby making it Extremely hazardous at the bottom and very difficult for cars to get up the street without, without flooring The accelerator. Did you consider that?
No, I did not. It's not part of my study.
Okay. Um, another question. Uh, is it not reasonable to expect that the people who would be renting in the proposed building Might have guests sometimes, and they would need to be able to park someplace? Where would you propose that they should park their vehicles?
You have on-street parking on Main Street, and depending on the duration of a party, Uh, the residents uh of the building could direct them to the uh, uh, metered parking in lot number one.
Well, what would keep them, again, from parking on the Park Drive Loop?
Well, ob- obviously nothing. If uh somebody found the space open there somewhere, uh, they very well could take it.
Right, so that, would it not be true then that, uh, for example, if it's a holiday, Residents who own homes, taxpayers who own homes without driveways, would come home And not have a place to park because of the guests of this building, and therefore the residents.
Ms. Lencheck, I'm, I'm just gonna, I'm sorry, it's that on the legal side, it's not private parking. It's it's public parking. And I, you know, Mr. Maltz can certainly answer if he feels that it could happen, but I just wanna be clear that it's not private parking there.
So do you, so do you believe it's reasonable for a taxpaying homeowner to have to park several blocks away?
I don't know if they'd park several blocks away, so I really can't uh answer that question. Uh, I defer to Mr. Wine's comment on that.
Okay, um, okay, I'll go ahead.
No, I was just gonna, I was just gonna reiterate, it's, it's, you know. It's, it's not, legally, anybody is permitted, anybody that's permitted to park on the street can park on the street the same way If a resident of a house had a big backyard party with lots of people, there may be thirty cars coming to their house. It's a, it's a public right of way.
Um, and Mr. Maltz, you you mentioned that uh with the one-bedroom apartment, it's probable that there'd be only one vehicle. But is it really true that that you really expect that a married couple, who both of whom work, would have only one vehicle? Is it not likely that they would have two?
Actually, I'll talk from personal experience. I've been married for fifty-one years. But for the uh first four or five years, my wife and I made do with one car in in an apartment.
Okay, but that was
So from personal experience, I would say, yes, I think it is reasonable. We worked the things out uh to fit.
Um, do you really think it's reasonable these days? Things have changed, I believe. Is that not true?
It's also expensive to own a car.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Do any other members of the public have any questions for Mr. Maltz? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have Bill again with a question. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, uh, Bill, Park Drive North, twenty-six-year residence. I just wanna come back to, I'm sorry, uh, to, to wanna beat a dead horse, the the parking in the, in the garage question. I know this was brought up Um, in the earlier meeting, but I'm not sure if it was answered. It it'd be possible to bring up the site plan again, uh, as you enter the garage, The first parking spot on the right, which would be the west side, The southwest corner of the garage. Uh, I I believe the proposal was for that car, if he's, if someone's coming in to park, That they would go forward and then back into that space if, and correct me if
Hold on, southwest, let's, let's make sure we're talking about the right one. This is the southwest space.
Oh, I'm ter- terribly sorry, the the northwest corner, terribly sorry.
Over here.
By the, right by the entrance. So if you're, you're coming in straight off of the street, I believe it was um testified that Uh, a car would easily be able to pull forward and back into that spot, which I do agree with. Um, my question would be, how then do they get back out onto the street? Do they back out onto the street? Um, by doing reverse maneuver?
No, what they would do is they would pull forward and do a reverse K-turn. Pull forward and then back, uh, make a turn, uh, with the back of their car towards Um, through the south, so that the angle to the left on the plan, And then pull forward to go out and make a left turn onto the street. And once again, we're talking about a small-sized car being assigned there. We're not talking about a minivan Or an SUV or something like that. As I said, we'd be talking something in the order of a Honda Civic or Accord, which are Very common uh, uh, reasonable part.
Yeah, Mr. Mills, you might have, you might have missed that, but we indicated, and I know it's not shown here, but Mr. Maltz indicated earlier, This would be signed as a compact space and assigned to somebody with a compact vehicle.
Yes.
Okay, fair enough. That's my only question.
Thank you, sir. Do any of the members of the public have any questions for Mr. Maltz on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have MK again. Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. MK Adam, this Park Drive South. Mr. Maltz, I I'm just trying to wrap my head about it. I hope you can answer this, but How can you analyze whether there are off-site parking resources if you did no parking study?
You don't have to do a parking study to identify off-site parking res- You don't have to do a parking study to identify off-site parking resources. You identify where the parking is available, you know, off-site, which happens to be on Main Street. You have parking that's, uh, uh, on Park Drive North and South, you know, on that loop. Those are on-street, but you do have, uh, but that's largely taken, and you do have a, a public, uh, parking lot nearby, which has both metered and permit parking. That's, that's not a parking study, that's a parking survey of what's available in the area to accommodate, uh, any shortfall or, uh, extra parking demand to supplement what's on-site. That's what it is. It's not a parking survey in the sense of how many cars are parked.
The parking survey then, and, and your demonstration of math was fantastic before, but the parking survey would just be potential parking spaces, not actual parking spaces, isn't that correct?
You're identifying where the parking areas are. In fact, for the parking in Lot One, what we focused on, what I focused on was the permit parking, and that's why I contacted the, uh, um, police department on their records to find out what is available in the lot. I counted the spaces in the lot, the two types, both metered and park, uh, permit, and I, with that information, I contacted the, uh, uh, Records Bureau to find out how many, uh, uh, permits were issued, or conversely, are available, and I also printed out the, uh, course. Because they, they, you can purchase a permit by the month, you can do it by the year.
Yes, you did, you did wonderful due diligence on the municipal parking lot, number one, but the practicality of parking on the Park Drive Loop, how many vehicles are registered to residents with addresses on the Park Drive Loop? How do you calculate that?
I cannot answer that. I have no idea.
Right, so it, the, the math doesn't hold up. Uh, you also, you cited the, the traffic rules for Main Street, but did you, in your observations, when you got lucky and parked on Main Street, did you observe the actual speed of cars that travel on that stretch of Main Street right in front of 410 Main?
I didn't do a speed study, though.
So theoretically, it's twenty-five miles per hour, but you know, we have no way of knowing whether that's actual, the actual, uh, rate of speed. Uh, again, and, and I, it's, congratulations on being married for fifty-one years, but on what basis can you not expect residents of this rental building fair market value not to own more than one vehicle? On what statistical basis?
So, Ms. Adams, I'm gonna, I'm gonna interject again. The testimony has been provided that if they do own a second vehicle, we're providing the off-site parking.
I appreciate that, Mr. Wine, but as the mayor pointed out herself at the, at a previous, uh, planning board meeting, the truth is, folks don't want to park six hundred feet away from their residence, so those of us are concerned with the, the, the actual use of street parking by the excessive ownership of cars in your building, and not only being excessive, but the, the average ownership of cars per household. What is the average ownership rate of cars per household in West Orange?
Ma'am, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop you. Ma'am, listen to me, ma'am, listen to me for a moment. Okay, first, it's been testified to. Second, it's going to be condition of the lease that the people will park in the off-site parking if they have a second car. Third, it has been testified to, it is legal for any member of the public to park on those streets, and these people, through their landlord, are taxpayers as the people are on the street. I think that, that sums it up.
Mr. Maltz, when you were on Main Street and, um, men, circling back to the crosswalk in front of Dunkin' Donuts that the mayor brought up, did you observe a bands of the, the crosswalk lights? Did traffic stop for pedestrians using that crosswalk?
I didn't make observations of that specific location.
And, um, how many school bus stops are actually in that vicinity on Main Street? Did you know that there are at least two?
Ma'am, no testifying, please. You can ask a question. If he knows the answer, he'll answer the question.
Hey, I didn't testify on that, nor.
I know, I'm following up on a question by the mayor about your observation of children in the area, and you, you had testified that you were in the area after school hours were over. So you didn't see children, um, walking on Main Street? You didn't see children deboarding the buses or onboarding their school buses?
What I said was, when I was out there in, in the evening, during the evening peak period, the school was already out by a couple of hours.
Right.
Uh, I was out there five o'clock and on. And in the morning, though, uh, I was, I was at, there, opposite, on Main Street, opposite Park Drive North, uh, during a time when school activity was present, and I had a note on my sheet, uh, that there were some schoolchildren present, which meant that there were some schoolchildren walking on the, uh, sidewalk.
But it's true that you didn't.
I didn't quantify them.
You didn't quantify, but you also didn't see, um, the school bus activity, is that correct?
I would have seen, if school buses were present, they would have, I, in fact, uh, I have a note. I'm looking at a note that says, uh, at eight-ten, I made an observation, school day, school buses present. You know, so, uh, they were present and I did observe them. I wasn't doing, uh, a, uh, of count the volume. It was just observations of what was occurring on the street.
You had mentioned the, um, that you're very familiar with the Mississippi Bus Loop, and that you, you know that the DeCamp bus lines went out of business for that, that part of their business in April.
Correct. They only do charters now.
Exactly, so what buses and how many per day replaced buses to New York that you testified to? That pick-up, it's actually the, um, the first stop now, uh, at the Mississippi Bus Loop. How many buses per day?
I didn't study that, and I didn't testify to it either.
Um, well, you did, you did in a follow-up. You did mention that other buses go to New York from the Mississippi Bus Loop, and that would be a way of tenants in 410 commuting to work.
Correct.
But, you, you know, you didn't, you don't know how many buses per day.
No, I don't.
Do you know what the current ridership statistics for the New Jersey Transit bus routes that start at the Mississippi Loop or pick up in front of 410?
No, I don't. I saw the bus stop in front of 410 and also directly opposite on several occasions, but, uh, I don't have the schedule.
It's the NJ21, NJT, so.
Correct.
Would you know what the average demographic or annual income of a typical?
Ms. Adams, I, I, I don't think that's within Mr. Maltz's purview as a traffic engineer.
I see, then whose purview would that be in?
I, I'm honestly not sure.
The reason I ask, Mr. Wine, is that the, um, the provision of the, the availability of public transportation as a rationale for approving the parking variance, it's just, again, whether or not it exists, or whether or not it applies to the residents of your building.
Well, well, with respect, Ms. Adams, I think you're, you know, selecting a part of Mr. Maltz's testimony as to part of the mitigation techniques for those eight spaces that we are deficient, um, under RSIS. You also heard Mr. Maltz testify that RSIS is a maximum, and I believe, Mr. Maltz, correct me if I'm wrong, was actually updated in 2023 to change it from a minimum to a maximum with the caveat that municipalities can hear these mitigative techniques and determine that, in fact, in certain situations, when you, you know, look at the totality of the circumstances, there's justification to go below that standard. Is, is that correct, Mr. Maltz?
That's correct, and that's what I said.
And, and so that was the testimony.
Thank you, and but the testimony in, in that specific reference, this again is not Hoboken, this is not Jersey City, this is West Orange, so the trends here are different from cities that are closer to Manhattan, is that correct?
Absolutely, and by the way, in certain cities closer to Manhattan, I believe Hoboken is one of them, I believe Jersey City is another, where there's outright exemptions in RSIS to allow you to provide no parking.
And, and Bravo for those towns. If I lived in Jersey City, I wouldn't want to own a car.
Okay, ma'am, let, let's, let's focus. The hour is getting late, and we would like to finish this, so please ask a question of his testimony.
No, these are, these are part of my questions, and Mr. Wine was generous enough to actually.
Okay, look, ma'am, ma'am, ask a question.
Um, Mr. Maltz, in your observations of the property, did you make note of the distance between, uh, the Danyan House, the senior citizen, uh, facility and 410?
Uh, I know it's further north of us on Main Street. I believe that's the facility you're talking about.
Yeah, the senior citizen housing, the, the actual.
Right, I, I didn't measure the distance, but I know it's there.
Alright, did you measure the distance between 410 and Edison School, the sixth graders?
No, I didn't.
Would you identify those populations as being more vulnerable?
In, Ms. Adams, again, I don't know that that's for Mr. Maltz, and I don't, I'm not sure.
I didn't, yeah, I didn't address anything about Edison or those, uh, or the seniors building.
I, uh, I, you're, yes, you're, you're absolutely right, but when, I, I'm just trying to get the, the safety issues of which you were generous, and listened to my, my neighbor before about, that you would be responsive to our safety concerns. And so in a traffic study or in, uh, an analysis of.
Ma'am, ask a question, please.
And I'm asking whether you considered the vulnerable populations of those two nearby facilities in your, in your analysis?
Uh, not specifically, and I didn't do an analysis of that. What I did do, as I pointed out numerous times, is identify what the negligible trip generation is for this project, which is distributed along Main Street, uh, in both directions, but, uh, which is very negligible and will provide an imperceptible impact at any location. You expect people to drive in a safe and careful manner when they drive a vehicle. Uh, but in terms of having to do extensive studies for something that generates one car to the area in five to nine minutes, uh, is not something I would think I'd have to do.
Mr. Maltz, you said you only used one resource to calculate those estimated trip calcula-, uh, trip calculations, is that correct?
That's right, and one of, and it's specified specifically required to use it by the New Jersey Residential Site Improvement Standard. I don't have a choice, nor does the board engineer or another traffic engineer. It's specifically cited to be used, and it's not just a small publication. There are four or five volumes that stand about a foot high.
Yeah, I know, I know, they're, they're very big books. Um, alright, well, thank you, I think that's it for now.
Thank you. Do any of the members of the public have any questions for Mr. Maltz? Please raise your hand and be identified.
No, we're not seeing any.
Good, seeing none, that will end, uh, Mr. Maltz's testimony. Thank you. Mr. Wine, you have.
Uh, sure, so Chairman, uh, it's, it's obviously ten-thirty, and as I indicated, that, uh, would be my final witness this evening, um, with the request to reserve our professional planner for the October meeting.
Okay, that sounds like a plan. So this application will be carried to the October? It was nine, nine, October ninth, planning board meeting, uh, via Zoom at seven-thirty PM. And I make a motion.
With no further notice necessary.
No further notice necessary. Okay, this is good.
And Chairman, just for the record, we, of course, extend the board's, uh, time to act if it's needed.
Thank you. And, uh, who will you be, uh, bringing next time?
Uh, the intention is to bring our professional planner, Mallory Clark.
Excellent. Okay. The next regular planning board meeting will be Wednesday, October ninth, twenty-twenty-four, at seven-thirty PM, and the next special meeting of the planning board will be September eleventh, twenty-twenty-four, at six-thirty PM in person at the town hall. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
No move, Mr. Chairman.
Second the motion by me, and all in favor?
Aye.
Against, the eyes are above the nose.
Aye.
Evening. See y'all next week. Thank you very much.
Bye, everybody.
Bye.